Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council meeting of Monday, December 6, 2021, here at 7:01 PM in the McKinnon Council chambers. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number two, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
Very good, all present, we have a call. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, November 15, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Steves.
One minor thing on item number 19. Since it was a roll call, you need to write out the names of the roll call yeses.
Anything else? Counselor Ryan.
Mr. Chair, thank you through you on, excuse me, let me get to the agenda item on the the parking permit, agenda item number 18. I was recused and I did not make the motion. I reviewed the record, it was Counselor Steves and Counselor Katrona. I did not make the motion because I was recused.
Okay. Anything else? Very good, all those in favor? And one abstention. Agenda item number four, Subcommittee Reports. General Government, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We have a couple of items on the agenda here tonight, and I will discuss them at the time.
Very good, thank you. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had to cancel the meeting that night, and so all of the items that are on tonight's agenda were sent straight up. We will be scheduling another meeting soon. I know a lot of the members want to talk about the roads in town. I'd like to talk about maybe adding the left turn signals back to Main Street. So we'll be scheduling another meeting soon. Thank you.
Very good. Education and Human Services, Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No meeting held. We do have a meeting coming up, December 14th, just prior to the PPP Subcommittee meeting, to discuss one agenda item, which was a grant that we authorized the Health Department to apply for, and they received, so it's the acceptance of the grant. So we'll be talking about that. Thank you.
Very good. Planning and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have not had a meeting since our Town Council meeting. Our next scheduled one is this Thursday at 6 o'clock in the Veterans Room. Thank you.
Very good. Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Lazo.
Yes, we had a meeting, and we have recommendations on agenda items 12 through 20 tonight. And we also have a PPP meeting scheduled for the 14th at 7 o'clock in the Veterans Room. Thank you.
Very good. WRCA update, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to take a moment to inform everybody that we were able to successfully extend the fare-free endeavor we have been on for the last couple of years during COVID till the end of 2022. I want to take a moment. It was a really good meeting. The Administrator took time before the meeting to listen to all the concerned groups, the Chamber of Commerce, to Equity Groups, and was recommended, made alterations to his recommendation that day. And the recommendation he gave was to extend fare-free until the end of 2022, and to also revisit the fare policy instead of kicking the can every year to keep it fare-free, start a real deep dive into whether or not we want to change the policy permanently. That's going to be coming up. We're going to be having those meetings in January. And I'll keep the town abreast to that. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. Agenda item number five, Chairman's Announcements. I would like to congratulate Yvonne Tortis on her retirement from working as the Executive Assistant to the Town Manager. She also served as a Town Hearing Officer, twice on the Charter Review Committee, and also assisted the EOC during the recent Southbridge State of Emergency. Further, she assisted many Council Chairpersons and Counselors on a daily basis, enabling us to be responsive to the citizens and helping to make Southbridge the great town it is. We wish her good fortune in her future endeavors. Milieu santé et bonne fortune. The local Historic District Study Committee is holding a public meeting on Wednesday, December 15, here in the McKinnon Council Chambers. The meeting starts at 7:00 PM, and the general public, as well as the members of the various Southbridge Boards, Committees, and Subcommittee's are all invited to attend to hear about the results of their work on studying the Central District here in town. I would like to advise my fellow Counselors that I hope to address the trash issue at the January 10 meeting. Kindly review the presentation materials you have and direct any questions to Vice Chair Adams, Andy, or Anna. As Counselors aware, there was a Charter Review Committee appointed by former Chairperson Jovan pursuant to the Home Rule Charter, Chapter 12, Section 5-2. I would like to announce that the Charter Review Committee has finished its work. I am asking Committee members Denise Clements, Pam Leduke, and Yvonne Tortis to come forward to present binders that the Committee has put together containing the results of their deliberations. I wish to hold a council of the whole meeting next Monday night, December 13th, at 7:00 PM, to allow the Council and Committee members the opportunity to ask and answer questions and generally discuss the findings of the Review Committee. Ladies.
Okay. So, just to be clear, we are not presenting material to the public, we are not discussing the material tonight. All we are doing is presenting you with a binder that has all our information in it for you to review and to be well-prepared when we have our Council of the Whole meeting, in which then we look forward to a really great discussion with everybody. Come on over here, you can't go away. I'm not quite sure where Ms. Yvonne is, but Pam Leduke, myself, and we thank you for giving us this time. We had a little miscommunication. We wanted to be an agenda item just to do this, but we figured here, Citizen Forum somewhere, would get the message out to you. We have spent the greater part of just over a year. We had a couple of glitches and a few slowdowns with some meetings that we couldn't hold, and we are done. So we have a letter that summarizes, and then we'll talk about a few minutes just on what you can expect in that document, and then where we would recommend we go from here. So I'm going to have Pam read the letter so that everybody knows what it says.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Counselors, thank you. Mr. Chairman and Council Members, the members of the Charter Review Committee are pleased to present its Report of Charter Change Recommendations based upon our extensive review of our primary governing document, the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, over the past 12 months. In addition to the recommended charter changes, we hope that our meeting minutes provide Council members with useful insight into Committee members' general observations and suggestions for other administrative and process changes by way of amendments to the Code of Bylaws and/or your Town Council Rules and Regulations. The members of the Charter Review Committee have devoted considerable time and effort to researching and analyzing best practices related to Massachusetts municipal government operations from both a general structural and local application standpoint. We believe that our methods, together with the collective experience of our members and the professionals and other town officials with whom we consulted, form a solid basis for our conclusions and recommendations. We would be remiss if we did not take this opportunity to specifically acknowledge the efforts of Yvonne Tortis during our deliberations. As the de facto Committee Secretary, Yvonne was responsible for posting agendas, transcribing minutes, and compiling all of the recommended changes into our final report. Her attention to detail and commitment to the process is greatly appreciated. It is our hope that you will carefully review the report and supporting documentation contained in this binder, consider our findings and recommendations, and ultimately support the submission of these changes to the state legislature and the voters of the town of Southbridge for final approval and implementation. Respectfully submitted, the Charter Review Committee, consisting of Denise Clements, myself, Andrew March, Mr. David Smick was a former member of our committee, and Yvonne Tortis.
Okay. So, as you said, you have a binder with, I don't know if you want to go through the binder first before we talk about the next stuff?
So, you have a binder, and the first document you will see in it is the Home Rule Charter. And what we've done is all of the changes, there are changes in red, there are strikeouts. This is the charter, the current charter, and it's a path. So you can see all of the changes that we made, deletions, additions, corrections, anything like that. And in blue, we've also put the meeting at which we voted. So then you can look back after the blue piece of paper into our, those are all of our agendas and all of our minutes, and you can reference those things. And you can see the discussions that we had in the debate regarding those changes that we finally voted on to recommend. So that's how this is compiled, your binder.
Strikeouts, but it's all there. We haven't, these are just recommendations that you know coming forward. We haven't officially changed anything. It's either additions in red or strikeouts are there that we recommend struck. So now, generally, the process, we've been through this once before. The process in this case, my recommendation to the Chair was to hold a Council of the Whole meeting so that we could actually discuss, and you could ask us direct questions instead of worrying about looking at all the minutes. But you can certainly refer to the minutes, they are all there. You can also watch videos. Every, I believe every single meeting was videoed. So it's out there on YouTube if you ever want to watch our two or three-hour discussions of how we kind of came to pass on some of the recommendations. And then from there, I've spoken both with State Rep Durant and Senator Fatman about the process, and generally, it comes in the form, if indeed, this is something that you think, I mean, there are some basic changes to. There are capitalizations, there's just some paragraph structure, things like that. But if you feel that this is something after discussion and after any changes or anything you guys all want to do is something that should go to the voters, then it needs to go first to the legislators. So it would go up through Senator Fatman first, and he would send it through the Senate and then down to the House. And then if they agree, it would go on the election ballot for June. Time is sort of of the essence because of the, our election is now two weeks earlier. It has to be, the ballot question has to be done, I believe, in April perhaps. I'm going to double-check with Matty on that. So when you decide, when you've conferred and reviewed and made those decisions, then a vote in a specific form. So it'll be really important prior to that agenda to making sure that the form of the vote is the way it needs to be to go up to the legislators. We can refer back to the previous one we did with the language on that, and we certainly can refer to legal counsel as Senator Fatman was saying. We can have municipal legal counsel look at the way we want to send it up as well. You send it up either by specific changes or generally, if you just, if the document is kind of a little bit of an overhaul-ish kind of a thing, you know, like I said, you'll understand as you read it, then you'll send it up in that entirety form, that you're looking for them to agree to the changes. They may come back and tell us there's a few things they don't agree to, or they don't think are legal, or whatever, and then you can decide what to do there. But if they do agree, and everybody comes to a consensus, it goes to the ballot. And then the people ultimately decide whether or not they want this to pass. We plan to have it posted on the, in its form now, have it posted as a public document. We've handed it out. We'll post it to, get it posted to the website. We'll also leave a hard copy with the Clerk's Office, a hard copy at the library, a hard copy at the Senior Center. We've got about five extra hard copies, so, and we can make more if we have to. But we plan to make sure the people see the document. It's not a hard read, shouldn't take us too long to actually read through it. It'll just be your debates. So we had requested a Council of the Whole for next week. I'm not sure if that's still something the Chairman is willing to do or to request or to do, to post. And I think that's about it. Yeah. So we're not here to discuss content, really. We're just here to tell you exactly what we've given you. And I can give you lots of time to look it over, and then more time before you can make a decision on it. Because it's an important document. Thank you. Thank you for endearing us with your charter, and we really enjoyed. Yvonne is here. Thank you, Yvonne, for coming up. And she really did, the yeoman's work is, I know the Chair likes to refer to it at times, a lot of typing, a lot of work. So, thank you. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for your hard work.
A lot of hard work has gone into this document, and I'm very appreciative of the yeoman's work that's gone into it, really superior work. And that's all I have for announcements today. Agenda item number six, Town Managers' Announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Council. Thank you. First, I'd like to start off, especially since Ms. Tortis is here. I want to echo your comments from earlier. As you know, I've been here 16 months now, and I would not have been able to make the transition into Southbridge and work on the accomplishments that we've all worked on without the assistance of Ms. Tortis. She provided all sorts of institutional knowledge and guidance along the way, helped me navigate a lot of difficult situations, and she will be greatly missed by many of the people here. And we are working diligently to try and fill her shoes. Nora Elgadiri is my new Executive Assistant. She just started in the last couple of weeks. We had a transition period where Yvonne was kind enough to make sure that I was left in good hands, and we're continuing to fill the other positions that are vacant in my office, and we look forward to moving forward with a new set of staff and the next set of team members for Southbridge. One housekeeping item, Ms. Blake Lee is here this evening. We need to postpone Agenda Item Number 26. We did get some feedback, last-minute feedback from Boilia, and we need to evaluate the other proposed item that they needed to address. I was on the call with Counselor Ryan for the WRCA. It was a good discussion and a good vote. Staff and I, including Chief Normandin and our new HR Director, Assistant Town Manager, Adriana Roviana, we attended MIA training for injured armed duty. We are still continuing to monitor the Delta variant as well as the new Omicron variant here in town. We meet every other two weeks, Department Heads as well as the school and Harrington Hospital. Mr. Pelletier gave a briefing this morning and noted that our positivity rate is up. The hospital indicated that they are at the same level, if not worse, than they were almost a year ago with the total number of patients, and that the numbers are just climbing. And I think you can see that on the news, on the nightly news, you see New Hampshire has one of the highest positivity rates. Mr. Pelletier is working. We're trying to pull staff, as well as others in the community, to see if we can get the vax bus to come in for vaccines as well as boosters. We will be leveraging the website and other forms of media to try and get the word out when those things happen. With regard to our website, staff recently participated in some of the training. As you know, one of the goals and objectives is to look at the upgrade of the website. We're hoping between now and next meeting to roll out the new format for the website. There will be a transition period for about 30 days where both websites will be up. We're still continuing to migrate content over from the other website, and I'm sure there'll be a period where people will go on and look, make changes, and they can be submitted to my office. I'll give an update when we get there at the next meeting. And one brief thing that I wanted to go over this evening. Mr. Marquetti has been asking about some updates relative to COVID-19. So I put together a very brief, I know we have a pretty good schedule, a very brief slide presentation about five or six slides talking about where we are with our COVID-19 funding. So if you'll indulge me for one minute, I'll step over to the podium. It was an email that we shared, actually, Ms. Counselor Marquetti had asked earlier in the week, and I thought it would be good to share it with everybody here. As I indicated earlier this week, Counselor Marquetti had asked if I could get him, with the assistance of Ms. Harnoy's, a quick update on where we are with COVID-19 economic relief. As you know, we get most of our funding from two different sources. The COVID Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, which is known as the CARES Act, as well as the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, known as ARPA. And the email that I provided to Counselor Marquetti that was put together by Ms. Harnoy's just goes over the total funds that we've received since the beginning of the pandemic. We will be getting a total of $5.04 million in ARPA money, but to date, they're being released in, they're calling it stanches or stanches. And so far, we've received $2.5 million. We've received money for, through the CARES Act, for the ambulance. We've received aid from FEMA for election postage. We've received several sets of funding for the airport, to the local Board of Health, CARES Act. And Ms. Harnoy's wanted to include, because it's an important component of what we do in town, what was provided to the schools. So to date, we have received $4.4 million in aid from the federal government through those two Acts. This was something that I showed you earlier this year when we were talking about ARPA planning. This shows that we were receiving the $5.044 million. Part of it was the direct local aid, and some of it is from the leftover county monies that were given to us, and they will flow directly to us. So the funds that we've used to date, just to give you an idea, so far of that $5.044 million, we've used $952,400. Those funds were based on the change order that we did for Main Street. If you recall, we upgraded the water lines going out to several of the commercial properties. Then we did a change order for reconstruction of Main Street between Goddard and Elm. And then recently, we've allocated some money based on our understanding of how we can use money for a qualified census tract for recreation to allow us to move forward with the conceptual design for the rail track. That leaves us a balance of over $4 million. And very quickly, when we were here earlier this year, we had met with the staff, and I had asked staff at that time in our brainstorming session where they thought the priorities should be. Some of the biggest were to ensure that we had proper, the biggest areas of where the money should go should be towards broadband, the ambulance, proving hotspots, mental health, paving, townwide security. Since that time, I've asked staff to give me actual proposed projects. And here is the total that we have to spend at this point. As I said, we received $5,44,950. We've expended the $952,000. So we have a balance of $4,092,550. Recently, I sent out an email request, as I said, to staff. And to date, although it may be a little hard to receive, read from here, these are the biggest requests that I've received from staff to date. The first three are the infrastructure. They came back from the DPW. These are, they're three separate projects to make infrastructure repairs to the water mains, sidewalks, curbing, drainage, and paving, each one located in different sections of town. Well, East Main Street, Main Street, and West Street. Those comprise the bulk of the $4.3 million. They are approximately $3 million in and of themselves. Economic development, we are allowed to use some of the ARPA monies for local economic development. Ms. Dean has given me these four items that she would like to address. They deal with marketing and branding of the community, looking at, instead of having an Executive Director, potentially a consultant that can be used with ARPA money to come in and work on economic development, and monies for low-income housing for rehab as well as commercial rehab. The Community Center has also provided some requests to upgrade the doors. They've got significant use while we were running the vaccine clinic there. Looking at IT upgrades, which would be useful if there's ever another situation such as this pandemic so that we have proper IT, because that is one of our relocation centers if we have continuity of operations. And then looking at making more permanent upgrades to the HVAC system. You'll notice that the total of these potential requests is $4.3 million. That's $300,000 over our balance. So I just wanted to put this out there. These are the requests that I've received to date, but I think it will warrant further discussion and an eventual full presentation with more detail I will give to the Council. And then we can discuss and vote on which, if any of these you wish to go forward, as well if there are any other particular projects that the Council wants to see that isn't on this list. But I just wanted to update you where we are on the funds we've received, the funds we've expended to date, and what staff thinks would be probably the best utilization of the remaining funds. I know we have a lot on the agenda. I'm happy to entertain any questions right now. If not, Counselor Chairman, we could put this on for another agenda for an in-depth discussion and potential votes.
Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One quick question, I don't know if the law allows it, but is it legal to use ARPA or CARES funds to put forward the tax rate? Obviously, we're going to be talking tax rate later tonight.
I think I've received a similar question in the past, and my inclination is probably not because there are prohibitions on using this for repayment of certain loans and other federal monies. The idea here is to stimulate economic development and directly assist the communities with improving infrastructure. There is quite a large number of FAQs and a rather lengthy interim rule which explains all of the ways you can use this money. I'm happy to revisit that. I'm happy to revisit that. They are constantly updating the interpretation. We just received the latest one in September, and I would imagine we'll get another one in the next month or so. So I am, I will go back, Counselor Steves, and I will look at that.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor McCady.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did do some research on FAQs, and the question was asked, can my city decrease taxes after receiving these funds? And the answer was the rule that would prohibit taxing decreases is restricted only on states. Local government's section of the bill contains no prohibition on lowering taxes. Thank you.
I'm not familiar with that. As I said, there's quite a lot of them, and I'd be happy to revisit that and see what we can do.
Counselor Lazo.
I would just like to say, I'd like to see a private meeting, not a private, but a separate meeting where we could just deal with these issues and in the structure of this program. We have a big agenda tonight, so I just wanted to end it on that.
Very good.
And that would conclude all of my announcements this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Okay. Agenda item number seven, presentations, the Board of Assessors, BOA, overview on tax classification and the tax rate by Wilfred Conoyer, Principal Assessor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a request. I'm looking at the agenda, and we are agenda item number seven, nine, 10, and 11. And my presentation and the debate it usually brings about can be kind of lengthy. I would like to request that you move my items or the board's items down after the appointments of the call firefighters and so forth. If you don't wish to, it's your prerogative. I just thought, I see the families out there, and I just don't want to keep them here unduly. So if you moved our agenda items before our agenda item 18, I think that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. I moved, we suspend the rules and amend the agenda as he presented.
Second half. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Very good. We'll move up. Agenda item, we are moved to agenda item number 12, vote to confirm the appointment of Jacob Webb as call firefighter effective immediately through June 30. I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Citizen's forum first. All right. Okay. My mistake. I apologize to the, to the people here. We have to do citizens forum first. I'm sorry, Paul. Okay, citizens forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council on an agenda, on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Please take the podium. Please state your name and address for the record.
Donald Solinsky, Henry Street. My five minutes tonight is about the immorality of your decision to take my partner and best friend of 11 years from me because of an emergency situation. Repeat, emergency. I cannot stress that enough. This was an emergency, plain and simple. Now, let me begin by saying that I hope and pray there is a God. I was raised Catholic, and Catholics believe there is one God and three beings. We come to this through faith, and that this faith in God is a gift. It is given by grace, the grace of the Holy Spirit. Now, grace is a favor, the free and undeserving help of God. Well, I prayed for grace, but I never received it until I was given a dog named Vegas. And through the love and loyalty of that animal, I did come to fully believe that all life in this world is special, not just life of men and women, but the life of all beings. Now, we can argue over the life of insects and comparison to lives of, say, gorillas. But when you watch a video or go to a zoo and you look a gorilla in the eyes and see how they treat one another, can you tell me there is no soul in that being? Well, the dog, the same thing goes for a dog, and Vegas showed me that. He showed me the love of God, and you took that away from me. You've also taken away the one thing that gave purpose to my life at this point in time. I've never been married. I've never had children, and there are many sad reasons for that, all stemming from my own failings as an individual. But Vegas returned both hope and meaning to my life. Again, you robbed me of that. You and that ACO not only sucked the life and spirit out of me, but you did reprehensible damage to the psyche of my dog, Vegas. You should be ashamed that you allowed this to happen without delving into the circumstances. I want to point out, the disgust and outrage does not extend to all of you. Ms. Ryan and Mr. Dow are two members that I am extremely thankful to, having supported Vegas and myself in this terrible ordeal. I'm also thankful to Counselor Adams for at least taking the time to try to get to know Vegas a little better. However, I think he was taken in by the sly and crafty ways of the ACO. She smiles and uses her soft speech and mannerisms to convince one that she's on their side, only trying to help or only to enforce the law, she'll say, when really her main purpose is to try to con you in supporting her way of looking at things. This became very personal, and you all, you all allowed that to flourish. I think if Mr. Adams had spent time with Vegas alone, he would have at least listened to Mary Lou from ARC, Animal Rescue Concern. When she approached you after the hearing to say she could place Vegas almost immediately in a rescue, but I feel that the ACO had poisoned this council's thinking of the case. She had used information that wasn't true and in some cases, an outright lie. For example, she kept trying to paint Vegas as a hostile to the staff at the Oxford Animal Shelter, when in fact Vegas was getting along fine with the staff and had even gotten close to one specific member. This is coming from three separate sources, all at odds with what the ACO reported to the town council. The Vegas that ARC is promoting now is not the Vegas of June 2021, when he was taken from me for choking. He is broken, and you all did that. Imagine if you will, your dog or cat in the same scenario. Do you think they would be the same after months and months in a kennel? To take someone's emotional support dog away from them just because the dog started to choke and vomit, and then to fight against a person's right to appeal, which I will get into in another one of these five-minute rants that I have. This is immoral to anyone with a heart and soul. Well, I hope you all have a Merry Christmas, and I hope you all get what you deserve. Go Pats.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to approach the podium to speak on an issue not on the agenda this evening?
Hi. Wishing you all good holidays, Hanukkah, solstice, Yule, Christmas, or Kwanzaa, or whatever else there is. For your 2022 New Year's resolution, I encourage everyone to make it local. Eat locally grown food, shop locally owned and employed shops, join local politics, and keep your local streets looking nice and safe ecologically. If you are a smoker, make a vow to stop throwing your cigarette butts on the ground. Do you know how toxic they are? Cigarette butts are one of the most common forms of litter, 4.5 million cigarette butts, according to a 2011 study. And that's 2011. This is 2021, so think about how many more. And the Ocean Conservancy found that cigarette butts are the most common debris collected among waterways. There are over 4,000 chemicals, including formaldehyde, benzene, arsenic, and nicotine in cigarette butts. The study I looked at studied the effects of cigarette butt leachate on two types of aquatic fish. When you throw your cigarette butt on the ground, where do you think it goes? Precipitation washes it to the nearest catch basin, where with other trash and litter, washes to brooks and rivers. So please, throw your cigarette butt in the trash, or better yet, stop smoking cigarettes. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to approach the podium at this time? Very good. Let's move on to agenda item number 12, I believe. Am I going right place?
Yep.
Okay. Agenda item number 12, vote to confirm the appointment of Jacob Webb as call firefighter effective immediately through June 30, 2024, upon successful completion of physical exam and state ethics training.
So move.
Second. Counselor Lazo.
The recommendation was to confirm unanimously at subcommittee. Before I go further, I'd just like to make a comment, not only to the management of the fire department, but what was impressive was the number of people that are going into the call. And to add to that, the Brotherhood of Firefighters in Southbridge at the subcommittee level, and even tonight, the gentlemen that are standing here in the background who are firefighters in Southbridge, here to support the call meant is a first great vibration of that they're, they're back and they're back with a mission at the call level. So I think the management and the fire department itself needs to be commended before we go further. But at this point, this one is a unanimous confirmation. Thank you.
Very good. Chief.
Good morning, good morning, everybody. Good evening, everybody. It's been a long day. So thank you very much, counselors. Town manager has reviewed our applications. Obviously, you've got the word from Chairman of the PPP, Counselor Lazo. I do have five candidates here tonight. These candidates have applied, some of them have applied back in May or June, but due to the COVID restrictions that we had on townwide situations going on in our building, plus we had our own COVID situation, we've now got to the point where we're going to put these guys on. So tonight, the first one up is Jake Webb. Jake currently resides in Southbridge, currently works as a security officer at Harrington Memorial Hospital and Registry of Motor Vehicles. During the hiring process, Jake displayed a high degree of integrity, responsibility, and ambition towards being a firefighter and EMT. He does have his EMT certification for a couple of months now. He's also gone ahead, obviously, through his security training and done some NIMS training. That's ICS 100, 200, 700, and is current in a CPR certification. Corey check has been completed successfully by our Human Resources Department. I would like to recommend Jake Webb to be appointed as a call firefighter.
Very good. Any discussion? Counselor Catrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the chief. I certainly support the candidates, chief. Just a quick question on, and I missed the PPP meeting. I was away. I noticed the addresses are redacted, and I didn't know if there was a reason. As I was going through these, the first thing that I'd look at is, are they all Southbridge residents? And as I stated, unfortunately, I missed the meeting, but is there reasoning for that?
I would probably defer to the town manager. That is the way we've always done redaction on addresses and phone numbers and email addresses when it gets released to the council, because it does become public document.
Counselor Adams.
So I just wanted to answer that question to the chief, not to counter what the chief is trying to say, but, but the specific address is usually redacted, but the town is usually in there.
Right.
So I think this is something that the chair has already discussed with the front office, though, as well, to make sure we put those on there, at least the town, where I'm getting where you're coming from. Yes, sir.
And that does happen in the TM's office, the redaction. We get full copies of everything.
It was just, as I was reading the documents, it's important to know what town, that's all I just feel. So thank you.
Yeah. Very good. Counselor Lazo.
Mr. Chairman, the question was raised at subcommittee about the address, because we do have counselors that are, you know, Southbridge first. So we were kind of baffled by it, the address part. I understand, I don't want his social security or his phone number, but to my knowledge, it was going to be put in for the council meeting. And I think maybe there was a miscommunication, but I thought that we're going to be on tonight, and I was kind of surprised I didn't see the address on there that they live in Southbridge. But good question.
Thank you.
We questioned it also.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, chief. I want to say thank you for putting back the call department life, because it's been off for a little while now. So I'm all aware, you can get more guys like them. We'll be, we'll be more happy to see young guys volunteer and give something for the town of Southwood. Thank you.
Just for a point of information, the concerns of the subcommittee were noted, and I did speak with people in the town manager's office. Things, there'll be corrections made, but also I'd like to say that at the meeting last week, that it was stated that the candidates were from Southbridge, so that the knowledge should get out there, except for.
With the exception of one.
Of the exception of one.
And that will come up in a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Joe Van.
Yeah, Mr. Town Manager, thank, I missed, Mr. Chairman, thank you, through you. Just one thing, so I can address it with all the candidates and just say it once. I want to just echo what the other counselors said. Thank you to Chief Norman and Deputy Chief Hewlick and Captain Nichols, especially for bringing back the call department. And I brought this up at the subcommittee meeting, that several years ago, when I had the opportunity to serve on PPP, I had asked the former fire chief why we didn't have any call firefighters, or it was so small, such a small group, and why weren't we recruiting call firefighters? And he had mentioned that he was requiring all firefighters, all call firefighters to be firefighter one and two before he would appoint them. A large group of these individuals, with the exception of one, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Don't have firefighter one and two, and the chief is going to send them to training for firefighter one and two. And that was my belief back then. That's how individuals in this town, as long as I've been alive in this town, that's how individuals joined the fire department, got trained, and then became the permanent members within the town. So I'd like to thank, echo that, and thank the chief, deputy chief, and Captain Nichols for rebuilding that program so that we have a bench, as you would say, for when future appointments come up, as we know that all towns around us are struggling to find firefighting EMTs, paramedics. So to be able to groom our own individuals on the fire department is kudos to them. So I fully supported all these candidates. Thank you.
Very good. Further discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 13, vote to confirm the appointment of Brandon Muller as call firefighter effective immediately through June 30, 2024, upon successful completion of physical exam and state ethics training.
So move.
Second.
Counselor Lazo.
The recommendation on Brendan Muller was unanimous for confirmation.
Very good. Chief.
So again, Brandon, he does reside in Southbridge, currently works for Wagner Motors as a parts specialist. I renamed that, please. During our hiring process, Brandon displayed a good, good character, a high degree of integrity, responsibility, and ambitions towards becoming a firefighter, which all of these candidates fill into that similar role. He does have limited fire and EMS knowledge, as Counselor Joe Van had said. I will say that the call volunteer fire academy starts up with two programs in the springtime, which each of these candidates will have a choice to go to either Springfield or Stowe. And then in the fall time, there is another one that will be available for, the town of Lester has one located there for the call ball. So I'm giving these people one year's time to complete those programs, because we really need and have to have firefighter one, two-trained firefighters. I recommend Brandon Muller to be appointed to the call fire department position.
Thank you. Discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 14, vote to confirm the appointment of Patrick Normandin as call firefighter effective immediately through June 30, 2024, upon successful completion of physical exam and state ethics training.
So move.
Second.
Counselor Lazo.
Mr. Chairman, Patrick Normandin was unanimously voted for confirmation, and I would like each and every counselor to take a look at that resume. This one was a steal. He is highly qualified, and I'm looking forward to see him in the future, as we all talked about, reflect what Counselor Joe Van said, creating a feeder system from the call up. This one here is a good catch. Thank you.
Deputy Chief.
Good evening, and thank you. Patrick comes to us from the town of Stirbridge. He lives less than a mile from the town line. He brings firefighter one, two certification, instructor certification, officer certification, as well as being a Massachusetts certified paramedic. He would need limited orientation training, and we can put him right to work. I've worked with Patrick in the past at another job and enjoyed so very much. He was a good comrade to work with, and I highly recommend him for candidate as a call department.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Item number 15, vote to confirm the appointment of Jamie Auburn as call firefighter effective immediately through June 30, 2024, upon successful completion of physical exam and state ethics training.
So move.
Second.
Counselor Lazo.
Jamie Auburn was unanimously confirmed at subcommittee for confirmation and counsel.
Very good. Chief.
So Jamie currently resides in Southbridge, and he works for a local landscaping company. During his hiring process, obviously, he displayed a high degree of integrity, responsibility, and ambition towards becoming a firefighter EMT. Jamie also does have very limited fire and EMS knowledge. A Corey check has been completed successfully by Human Resources Department. I would like to recommend to PPP, also to the council for appointment.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 16, vote to confirm the appointment of Tyler Afton as call firefighter effective immediately through June 30, 2024, upon successful completion of physical exam and state ethics training.
So move.
Second.
Counselor Lazo.
Tyler Afton was recommended for full confirmation unanimously.
Very good. Chief.
Tyler resides in Southbridge and currently works for a landscaping company. I do have a reasoning for him not being there last week. He was having a medical condition, so we excused him from coming last week. During his hiring process, Tyler displayed a high degree of integrity, responsibility, and ambition. He does have some EMT training and also some NIMS training and is currently certified in CPR. He has limited fire, actually, he does have limited fire knowledge, but does have some EMT knowledge. So we're working on that with him also. I would like to recommend to counsel Tyler Afton.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you, counselors.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
We'd get back to shaking hands soon, someday. We'd get back to shaking hands soon, someday, at the end, so.
Okay. I guess we're going backwards now. Item number seven.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment while he's sitting up. I got a quick email from somebody saying that the YouTube live broadcast is not working. So I don't know if that's still an issue or not. I think the cable one is working.
The YouTube isn't?
I don't know if it is or not now. I think the cable one is working.
The YouTube isn't?
I don't know if it is or not now.
Okay, all right. Someone is, looks like someone's on it.
Good evening again, members of the council. Thank you for allowing us to change positions, although those kids would have really enjoyed the tax presentation, I'm sure. So anyway, tonight we're going to be discussing classification and the tax rate. On behalf of the Board of Assessors, myself, Fran Biscay, Diane Kukoska, we're going to be presenting information. Later on, you'll be making some votes to do with the, the tax rate and the split in the tax. First is, the purpose of classification and the options. Mass General allows a shift in the burden paid by the various classes of property. It doesn't change the total tax levy for the town. It simply determines the percent share borne by each class of property. What doesn't it do? It doesn't determine the tax rate. It's all math, which we're going to present. It doesn't determine how much money can be raised. That's Proposition Two and a Half dictates that, and it doesn't determine how much money will be raised. A series of your votes in the last year on all of the budgets and other money spent, that's what determined what the, what the tax rate will be. Topics of discussion tonight, we're going to be talking about a variety of things, new growth, revaluation, which means we redo all of the property values every year. The tax levy, the tax rate, the levy limit, which means how much money we can raise, our excess levy capacity. We'll be discussing a residential exemption, the classification factors, give some examples of a tax shift, what, what it would actually mean, and then tax-wise, how do we compare to our neighbors and the other towns around. So on new growth, what is it? Well, basically, it's new properties that are developed, new subdivisions, new solar fields, new buildings, properties that are taken off of the exempt roles, brought into the taxable roles, like Wells Junior High, the apartments, and so forth. How does it affect property taxes? Well, it allows the town to raise additional dollars in, to be spent to run the town, while only minimally affecting the existing taxpayers. And how does it affect the levy limit? It allows the levy limit, the amount of taxes the town can raise, rise by the amount of new growth. So, for Southbridge, this year, this is a summary of our new growth. You can see we brought in, there's about $5 million in residential value, 273 in commercial value, 1,007 in industrial value, and 31,008 in personal property or business equipment. You can see, the personal property makes up 81.9% of our new growth, and the vast majority of the new growth dollars that we're raising. And that tip, that is a lot of solar farms. It's also a lot of utilities, which we've capturing extra value on this year. So, as you can see, this graphically represents the, the CIP, or mainly the personal property, brings up the largest portion of this. Our 2022 taxable town value, as you can see, the town is worth $1,341, and of that, 78.1% of that is the residential class, and the remaining, remaining 21.9% is commercial, industrial, and personal property. Graphically just illustrates it again, the bulk of the town is residential. So, this chart here, and I know it's rather busy, but I didn't want to cut any of this out. What you see from 2008, where the residential class bore 83.6% of the property tax burden, to this year, where it bears 78.1%, it's kind of like a shift. You can see the, it's a slow slope. In 2008, that's when residential values were at a high from the last building boom, and so they had appreciated to the point where they were picking up 83.6% of the property tax burden. And then, if you all recall, values, the residential values came down rather sharply, and 83%, 81%, 79%. So, they were falling faster. In the commercial, industrial, personal property class, they were much more stable. It's not like they were going up, but they were holding their value. So that allowed a natural shift in the taxation, a shift to that commercial, industrial, personal property class. And I leave that 83.6% on there. To the left, if I had the other years, you'd see it was very similar to that, just so we can show the trend. In the last two years, last year, the residential class had 78.5%, but this year, mainly because of that growth in personal property, the residential share of the taxes that they're paying has gone down a little bit. So, revali, revaluation, recertification. Recertification occurs every five years now. It's mandated by the state. It's like an audit of our property values that we have to adjust every year based on the market, but we still have to do, we still have to update our values every year. It's just that the Department of Revenue isn't auditing us. They, we maintain the same standards. We have to do the exact same thing, but they're not coming in and, you know, looking at our numbers, looking at all the ratios. We still do them, but they're just not checking on them annually, to the same degree. Full and fair cash value, Southbridge, like every city and, city and town in the state, is required to update their values so that they represent full and fair cash value on the prior January 1. So the values we're doing right now are as of January 1, 2021. So, okay. They're all based on arms-length sales in the prior year or the prior calendar year, and what it really ensures is, the taxes are based on your proportional share of the town value. Your value represents a percentage ownership of the town, and that's the percentage tax burden that you pay. It's all based on full and fair cash value, and the individual proportions can change from year to year. So, in some years, some residential classes go up really fast, because they're really hot, like this year it's condominiums. In other years, you can't give them away, so it all changes year to year. The ways we, the ways we do that is, we have a cyclical inspection program, which we're mandated to do by the state. We have to visit our, we have approximately 6,000 properties. We're required to visit them every 10 years, so 6,000 divided by 10, we have to visit about 600 properties a year to inspect them and make sure their, our, our data is correct on them. We do a sales review. Any property that sells, we visit, we check it out on the MLS. We, we talk to realtors about them and so forth, if they seem a little unusual. So, building permits, we go out on every single building permit. We update our records. That's one of the ways we get our new growth, but it also allows our data to be clean and our values to be correct. Recertification, revaluation, field review. In, in the year that we're doing a recertification, we have to go out, we have a contractor that does this, because you have to do approximately 50% of all the properties in about six weeks, so you need a lot, a lot of help. And every year, we send out annual income and expense questionnaires. Some of you get them if you're business people, and basically, we're asking you, what are the rents? What are you, what are the rents you're getting? What are your expenses? And that's useful in figuring out what a property is worth. We send out forms of lists, which are on personal property. We mail them to all of the businesses that have personal property every year, and it allows them to tell us what, what they have for personal property, as well as our own inspections. Inspections per taxpayer request, sometimes they'll ask us, and abatement applications. If anybody applies for an abatement, we go and inspect those too. That's how we help ensure the values are correct. So this year, the valuation changes. Single families were pretty hot. Their values went up about 10.8% over last year. Condos were even hotter. Their values went up about 15.3%. Two and three families, even hotter, particularly the three families, they went up 18%. Apartments over four, over four units, last year, they went up far more than any other class of property. This year, they've settled down a little bit, but based on the sales that we're already seeing, next year they're going to go up considerably again. And the land, it went down 0.7, a little less than 1%. Basically, they stayed the same. Just a few small types of properties went down. So, the overall residential class went up in value 11.9%. The overall commercial class went down in value 3.7%, and the overall industrial class went up 9.2%. So, in your packets, I gave information. This is a little bit deceiving. That 3.7% on the commercial, a big part of that is, one of our properties went down 5 million, $5,100,000, I believe. So, that distorted this a little bit, and one of our industrial properties, right next door, went up about 5 and 1/2 million dollars. So that distorted the overall industrial going up a little bit, but I just wanted to point that out. Let's see. So, what this is, this is a report that we have, we submit to the Department of Revenue every year. People ask, how do you come up with these values, and how, what do they really mean? So, there's what's called the assessment to sales ratio. So, if a property sold for $82,000, and we're assessing it, let's go the other way. If the property was assessed at $82,000, and it sold for 100,000, that would be an assessment to sales ratio of 82%. And, we're required to have them at 95, 90 to 100%. We typically try to be at 95% of your, your largest class, and the other classes have to be within 5%. So what, what this really means is, if you see the part where, I've got a little asterisk down there, you see the 101s, which are single families, are at 96%, the 102s, which are condominium, condominiums, are at 95%, the 103s, small class, I'm not going to go into that. The 104s, two families, are at 96%, the 105s are at 97%, the 111s, which are apartment buildings, are at 99%, land is at 96%, and commercial, 97%. We didn't have any valid sales in the industrial, the 400 class. Well, before we started, just based on the appreciate, just based on the sales were going up, before we started, the single families were at 85%. Last year, they were at 95%, just like this year, but because the sales have gone higher, that ratio went down, and so you have to adjust your values, so that is now at between 90 and 100, and our goal is at 95. So, the, the single families, before we started, they were at 85%. After all of our adjustments, they're at 96%, which is full and fair cash value again. Based on that chart you see up there, there were 142 arms-length sales, so that's quite a sampling. I know that concept is a little confusing, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to go into it, but the condominiums are the second one. Were at 95%. There were seven arms-length condominium sales, but before we started, because the prices people were paying had gone up so much, that assessment to sale ratio from, based on the assessments at the end of last year, had fallen to 78%. We had to raise the condominium values up so that they reached the 95%, and you do this on all of the sale properties, and that's, that's how you assure you're at the, the correct values there, and then you apply it to the non-sale properties. That, in a nutshell, that's how assessments work. So the tax levy, that, that's the total amount to be raised is determined by all the voted expenditures, state and county, county charges. It's paid for by using state aid, reimbursements, the local receipts, enterprise funds, free cash stabilization, stabilization and transfers. The remainder is the tax levy. So for Southbridge, this year, our tax levy is $24,611. So, if you take that $24,611, you divide it by the total town value, $1,1341, the math of that, that determines the $17.90 tax rate, which is what Southbridge will be. A comparison, last year, and this year, we're raising 24 millions, I forgot a comma there, $24,611. Last year, we raised $23,196,000. That's an overall increase of 809,000, or 3.49%. However, if you subtract the new growth, this year, it's 756,515 in additional taxes, that, that really minimizes the impact to any existing taxpayers. So the change after new growth is only 52,690, or .23%. A quarter, a quarter of 1% is what the net comes out to. How does Proposition Two and a Half affect this? Well, it establishes a levy ceiling, your levy limit, and your maximum allowable levy, and what is excess levy capacity? Well, levy ceiling is the maximum amount you could raise, the levy limit and maximum allowable levy. The top one, levy ceiling, let me go a little further. The levy ceiling states that in any, any year, property taxes can exceed 2 and 1/2% of the total assessed value of the town. So, tax rate cannot exceed $25 per $1,000 valuation, is what it really comes down to. For Southbridge, that means we have to be below $33,528,000, which we obviously are. The levy limit and the maximum allowable levy, so basically what that is, is you take last year's levy limit, you add a 2 and 1/2% increase, which we're allowed to do, you add your new growth for the year, that equals your levy limit. That's what you can raise. To that, you can include, you can add any additional voter-approved debt exclusions and overrides. In Southbridge, it's the Bay Path renovations we did a few years ago. That equals the maximum allowable tax levy, and, okay. So for Southbridge, you can see, last year's levy limit was $23,419. You add the 2 and 1/2% increase, you add the new growth that we've already talked about. That means our levy limit is $24,761,280. To that, you add the, any debt exclusions, which we've already said, Bay Path. So that means our maximum allowable tax levy this year is $24,972,850. So this chart simply says, we have your maximum allowable levy, you have your actual tax levy of the $24,600. That means we could have raised an additional $966,739, but chose not to as a town. So that's available for future years. For, we, we're not spending it this year, but next year, we could, our levy limit, excess levy capacity, will begin at that amount, and to that, we'll add next year the new growth and that 2 and 1/2%. So it gives us capacity in future years. So, options. So there are a couple of things the town can do. You can pass a residential exemption, you can split the tax rate. What a residential exemption does, it allows you to shift, give a discount of up to 35% of the average residential value to owner-occupied residential properties. To do that, though, the residential class still has to say, pay the same amount, the same share, so the tax rate, rate will increase for residential properties. It would actually be higher than it would be for the commercial. It should, this shifts the burden from lower-valued homes to vacant land, to higher-priced homes, and non-resident homes. It's not means-tested, so somebody who's not a lot of means, but they might have a large, expensive house, they, they, it's going to hurt them. All residential land is taxed at the higher rate, so vacant land will be taxed at the higher rate. This works in communities with a large amount of vacation homes or non-owner-occupied properties to shift the burden onto. The Board of Assessors strongly recommends against adoption of this exemption. This map right here, and this is updated as of last year, it shows the communities that have a residential exemption. You can see the purple ones, they're all centralized around Boston and the surrounding communities. You see Province Town, and I forget what those other two are, Wealth League, and I think Truro at the end of the Cape, and you see Martha's Vineyard down there as well. Excuse me, not Martha's Vineyard, I think that's Nantucket. What this table here shows, and it's hard to read, I know, is the average, if we were to adopt a 10% resident, residential exemption, the yellow line shows that average residential value of $238,000 value. If it was owner-occupied, it would get a savings of $82.51. But if it wasn't owner-occupied, it would actually pay $312 more, okay? This is all based on value in the residential class. It does, two-family, if the owner lives there, they could get it. Three-family, if the owner lives there, they could get it. A four-family, if the owner lives there, they could get it, et cetera. The maroon line that's further down shows a value of $300,000, and that's about the break-even point. Any houses below that will pay a little bit less, like at 300,000, they'll get a $1.73 discount per year, but that same house, if it wasn't owner-occupied, would pay $393 more. So, this is a very, very difficult process to implement. It takes about a year of, to implement. It's too late for 2022. If it's ever anything you want, you need to study it about a year in advance. Prob, it's very labor-intensive. Okay, pass on that. Classification factor, here's where the talk is about shifting the tax rate. So, again, Mass General law, Chapter 4056, requires the council to adopt a factor between one and the minimum residential factor. It allows a maximum shift of 50% to the CIP, commercial, industrial, personal property classes. So based on a, on a percentage of residential to commercial, the minimum residential factor could be .8602. If we did that, then the resident, the commercial... If we did that, then the resident, the commercial class would be shifted a hundred and fifty percent. That's the maximum, you could do anything in between. So a factor of one-point-oh, each class would be taxed at the same rate. So some examples of shift at the various classes. Uh, actually, before I did this, this map here is, the, the properties that are in green are the ones that actually have a split tax rate. As you can see, I got it, I got it, uh, the highways running through it. The typically, communities that do this have a very desirable location, but, um, you can see Southbridge in the middle, central Massachusetts. The two properties to the east that, that are in green are Worcester and Auburn. Uh, there's nothing to the west of them, Central Mass and, and I forget the county to the west of, at Hampton County. Um, and then you get to ninety-one, Springfield, Springfield has a split rate and I think West Springfield, Chicopee, but there's nothing, none of our immediate neighbors do. Webster did have a split rate. Uh, they moved over the last twenty years and I think they finally got back to a single tax rate in two thousand and nineteen, uh, but it took them twenty years to get there. Little by little, they kept shifting it back. Sturbridge had a split rate twice, uh, in the latest time, uh, that was approximately two thousand and ten and they worked towards getting it back to a single tax rate, which they did in two thousand and fifteen. Fitchburg had a split tax rate and they got back to a single tax rate in two thousand and twenty. So this here shows some tax rate shifting scenarios. The bottom where it says examples of the tax, tax rate shift, uh, average single-family value, two-hundred-thirty-eight-thousand, three-fifteen, and just want to define that again. So that's the total value of all the single-family properties divided by the number of them. That's where you get that two-hundred-thirty-eight-thousand, it's called the average. That's how the state does it here, Boston, everywhere else, so that's how we do it. Those are the published numbers that they use. So with a single tax rate of seventeen-ninety, the average single-family property would have a tax bill of four-thousand-two-sixty-five-eighty-four. Above that, and that's the highlighted yellow line, above that, you see all the various, uh, examples of a, that same valued property, but at different percentages of the shift. So you can see, if we did it the fifty percent, that would lower the single-family bill by five-hundred-ninety-six dollars. But if you go to the two columns to the right of that, it would add four-thousand-eight-hundred-twenty-three to the average commercial, six-thousand-twenty dollars to the average industrial. So the average industrial, for example, would go from twelve-thousand-thirty-nine to eighteen-thousand-fifty-nine. And the reason for that is, again, there's seventy-nine percent, uh, seventy-eight point, can't remember the number. There's a large amount of residential property in proportion to the commercial. Okay? So again, it, it's the recommendation of the Board of Assessors that the council approve a factor of one, a single, a single tax rate. This gives some examples of property taxes this year compared to last year in the various classes. So in that first column, you see condominiums, the average tax bill is going to be two-thousand-fifty-nine dollars. Last year, it was at nineteen-thirty-three, increase of a hundred-twenty-six dollars and ninety, seventy-five cents. That's a six-and-a-half percent increase. But if you recall, and the reason for that, if you recall, the condominiums went up in value at a much higher proportion than all the other classes because they were really hot this year. Uh, the single-family, which is really important, uh, the average tax bill, four-thousand-two-sixty-five, it's going to go up two-point-one-nine percent, uh, over last year or ninety-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Two and three families, because again, they were really hot this year, their values appreciated more than other classes. They're going up about three-hundred-thirty dollars or eight-point-eight percent. Land is going down slightly. Uh, over four-unit apartment buildings, um, they're going down slightly, one-point-nine-two percent. The commercial, average commercial, um, it says going down thirteen-forty-eight or twelve-point-two-seven percent, but I've explained this a few times and I just really, it's really important, I want to make sure I emphasize it. Below that, it says, please note that there was a shift in reduction of a commercial-class parcel in the amount of minus five-million-sixty-one-thousand to an adjacent industrial-class parcel, which increased by five-million-six, five-eighty-seven. So that large value distorted both of those classes. The average commercial is going down, but not, not twelve percent. When you take away five million dollars from a, a class that only has a hundred properties, it really distorts the average and the same thing with the industrials. So again, the Board of Assessors recommends a factor of one-point-oh, a single tax rate for all classes. Tax-wise, how do we compare to our other communities? Well, this here is an illustration of how we compare to the state. The state average this year in the far, far-right-hand column is, the average tax bill is six-thousand-one-forty-eight and Southbridge is four-thousand-one-seventy-five. Again, just informational, I'm not making any commentary on this. This is how we compare to our neighbors and some of the towns haven't set their tax rate yet, so we always have to follow this by a year, but Southbridge, our average tax bill last year was four-thousand-one-seventy-five. We were two-hundred-and-fifty-three ranking in the lowest. There were two-hundred-and-fifty-two communities that had a higher single-family average tax bill. And I think they, in, in this, the state only publishes the top three-thirty because some of these communities do some things like that residential exemption that I talked about and it's very difficult to compare to others. So this is two-fifty-three out of three-hundred-thirty, I believe. I'm sorry, out of three-hundred-twenty-nine this year. So average, our average tax bill, four-thousand-one-seventy-five. Sturbridge's average tax bill, five-thousand-nine-seventy-five, two-thousand dollars more and they have a CPA, a community preserv, it's a Surtax for Community Preservation Act. Charlton, four-thousand-three-forty-eight, couple hundred dollars more than us. Auburn, five-thousand-one-fourteen, couple one-thousand more than us approximately. Dudley, three-thousand-four-sixty-one, quite a bit less than us. Webster, four-thousand-three-fifty-four, couple hundred dollars more than us. And Ware, four-thousand-sixty-one, a little less than us. So people who are watching this every year, I make a point of pointing this out because we'll get a bunch of phone calls on what kind of exemptions, what kind of help is out there. So I'd like to take a minute to do this. Tax exemptions and help, uh, there are various exemptions under state law, which if you qualify financially or in other ways, you get some money off of your property taxes. Top one is elderly person or a surviving spouse. It's got a, uh, financial net worth requirement, but it gives a hundred-seventy-five dollars off the property tax. The next one gives five-hundred dollars off the property tax. There's a net worth and an income requirement on that. Blind exemption, if you're certified blind by the Mass. Commission on Blind, you can get four-hundred-thirty-seven-fifty. Clause eighteen hardship, there are various, but what that really means is it's meant to be a temporary, temporary help to somebody who's got some real dire straits that have happened. And, uh, let's see, forty-one-A tax deferral. So somebody, if they wanted to, they can defer all of their property tax and sort of in a way, like a second mortgage. You don't pay it in the year in question, but when you sell the house or you pass away, uh, the money has to be paid and it's at a five percent interest rate. And then there's the senior tax abatement program, which is used in town where you can get up to, not get up to, you can get six-hundred dollars off your property taxes every year. And that's it. Oh, um, one more thing. After you voted on the agenda, three agenda items on this, there's a sheet that I'm going to pass around. If you could all sign the last page of it, it simply, uh, certifies that you were presented with the information. Okay? Thank you.
Very good. Any questions? Counsel Lazo.
Uh, not so much a question. I'd just like to, uh, thank Will Canoia for his years of service. He, uh, put him for retirement. I wish we would just reject his retirement, keep him, but time goes on and, uh, he's a good friend of mine, went to school together, outstanding assessor. Uh, don't always agree with taxation, but it's a part of life and, uh, the explanation, I've had it explained to me by various assessors, Dean Yaccabucci and various other ones, and I will, you did a good job. Thank you for your years of service in the town of Southbridge.
Thank you. Uh, and if I have a quick comment as well. So people ask me, how the heck did you ever become an assessor? Thirty-four years ago, there was a, something in the paper about a vacancy on the Board of Assessors, so I thought, yeah, that sounds really glamorous, I'm going to apply. Unfortunately, somebody else had the same idea and the next thing I know, I'm being interviewed by the town council, that's what the charter says, to fill a vacancy, just like this, I'm being interviewed and it's like, all I wanted to do was volunteer and oddly enough, the chairman of the town council that night in nineteen-eighty-eight was Counselor Lazo and, uh, it's just funny how it all comes around.
Yep.
We haven't changed a bit.
Any discussion? Counsel Marketti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Threu-Yu. Uh, you, in the note below here, and we spoke about this earlier, there was a shift in the commercial-class parcel, the amount of five-million-sixty-one-thousand-one-hundred. And you mentioned that that was the hotel conference center that re, uh, dropped in value. How does the hotel and conference center, how could that possibly drop in value?
Good question. So a hotel conference center is a commercial property like all the other commercial properties in town. It's valued based on the income, on the income approach. So a few things. So a hotel conference center, which is a hospitality-type business, during a COVID pandemic, is not getting the revenue that it did pre-COVID. It also is, depreciates every year based on the condition, but the biggest factor is, again, the COVID. I can tell you, Sturbridge lowered their hotels and their restaurants and so forth by twenty and thirty percent. This is what they told me. I haven't looked at any individual properties, but the hospitality and, because how many conferences were occurring at the hotel conference center last year? Not many, if any. And that's, that's how you do it, you base it on the income value. So conversely though, on the building next to it, they were doing some improvement on the, not the building, the parcel next to it, which is the, uh, which is the business park. So the hotel conference center went down about five-point-one million, the business park went up about five-point-five million, so. I was glad actually, but I, I point that out because it's, it's very important. Shane, it, it, it distorts the cla, those two classes of properties. That's how it happened.
Uh, thank you for explaining that. So I mean, and that to me, if you're telling me that we lost money because of COVID, then that tells me, through you to the town manager, that we should be able to offset some of that loss by using the COVID money. Uh, the other, the other thing that I'm looking at here, and I, I see it every, every year that you've been doing this, it always seems like the shift of the tax burden is on the residential families. Here, it's condos, one-family, two- and three-family. Vacant land has been reduced. Over-four-unit apartments, if somebody can afford that, a four-unit apartment, uh, then they must be pretty well off, I would think. Commercial property, that's, you know, Big Y, Rite Aid, companies like that. And industrial, and it seems to me that they can afford a tax increase. I know a lot of, every year I say, we should consider a split tax rate. And I know some counselors talk about the mom-and-pop stores, but, uh, we also have to think about the mom-and-pop residents who every year get hit with the most, the biggest burden of these tax increases. This year, you've reduced the tax rate, but you managed to, you know, now the, the home values have gone up, so we're still going to have to pay more. So that, that's, I say that every year. The only way to, to even it out is for a split tax rate. But that's all I have for now, thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Lazo.
Just a quick comment. I've always voted for a single tax rate when I sat in a council seat. Um, and they say, well, seventy-eight percent is residential. It was always explained to me by various people and especially Mr. Canoia, that when you spread the butter on the bread, it's better off spreading it all over the bread instead of just certain portions of that piece of bread. So when I turned around and looked at it that way and I looked at a slice of bread in the town of Southbridge, we have to spread it equally, the analogy worked for me to, to stay with a single tax rate. When you look at the map and you see all the green cities and towns, they're usually around some sort of interstate highway tourism where there are industrial parks. And if you look at the roadways, they're all around the roadways of, you know, one-twenty-eight, four-ninety-five. You look as they, they go the Mass. Pike West and how the branches of roadways go up, the industrial areas that are built in those areas can afford to take more of the shift where, you know, their industry is matching their residential. So in my case, I thought, if we spread it out equally, you know, the pain is palatable on all fronts. Thank you. I mean, it was up to me, I wouldn't raise taxes at all, but we can't do that. At least I don't think we can.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Threu-Yu. Um, every, uh, this will be no surprise to anybody who knows me, I've been pretty consistent on this. Um, I do not support, personally, at a personal level, a split tax rate. It, as it's been mentioned by other speakers, it's meant really for cities and places that can, you know, places that are going to be attractions no matter what. Yeah, it's not, communities like Southbridge are mainly residential. Especially this year though, businesses have been hit hard. Will pointed out perfectly. Look at all the income that was lost in these businesses, five million dollars from our conference center. Now we want to talk about splitting the rate and increasing their tax bill by thousands, the average tax bill by thousands, while the average homeowner gets an eighty-two-dollar break. It's, it's not a comparable way and as Counsel Lazo said, especially right now, everybody's feeling pain. I do not want to put any extra pain on businesses in such a delicate business environment when we're trying to expand and grow our business community, not reduce its size. Split tax rates always reduce business size because it makes it much more costly for businesses to do business in their communities. So I would urge, especially this year, a no, um, to stick with a single tax rate. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Steves.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, while I understand your argument there, Counsel Ryan, um, and have traditionally supported a single tax rate as well, um, I'm seriously thinking about doing a split track, split rate this year because of the fact that while you're right that it, that the COVID situation has hit the businesses, especially the smaller ones hard, um, it's also hit the homeowners hard. Um, a lot of the people that, especially in our community's demographics, are either downsized or for whatever one reason or another, they're in economic straits that are much more difficult than they were prior to COVID. For the same, very same reasons that the businesses are in economic straits that are more difficult. What we really need, quite honestly, is we shouldn't be in a situation where we have to decide to pit small businesses against the residents. What we should, what we need to be doing is getting the money from the people who have the money, the super, the super-large businesses, the, the super, the super-large, um, income residents or individuals in this country who aren't paying the taxes in the first place and have, are able to afford the lawyers to scam their way out of paying our taxes. We need to be getting the money from that, with those people and the federal government that can, that can share and ma, and make the burden less, uh, make, make the burden more palatable for the smaller, for the smaller communities like ours. One of the things that I, that, that map pointed out is, as you pointed out, is that a lot of the communities that do this are on interstate, which is true. Uh, but the ones that I've seen that do, that, um, have, have, when they, when they're doing their tax rates, a lot of the communities are, the split is pretty similar to ours. They're all more or less the same, eighty, twenty, plus or minus a percent or two. They're not that far apart, regardless of whether you're here off of a main, main interstate or you're Auburn or Webster, the split is more or less the same. So that's, so I don't think that that is necessarily a factor in terms of whether we decide to do a split rate. Um, and I was thinking that, that would make sense to, to try it and see what difference it makes by splitting it as a thirty percent split. So I guess I'll, I guess I'll make that as a motion.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman? We are not at the point of motions, we're at presentation right now, am I not correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. That'll be fine. One sec.
At the moment.
Very good. Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Threu-Yu. We keep saying businesses, businesses. I don't see no businesses in town of Southbridge. There's only a few of them and what we're doing, we keep pushing them out. What we're doing for the businesses is to come into town or help what is still in town, nothing. You, businesses, businesses, they need to pay more, they're making more money. I don't see it. You know, for year and year, no business come to town because none of the council or the town support the businesses or helping them to come and, uh, open business or- or the town support the businesses or helping them to come and open business or do anything. Like, I don't understand why we keep attacking businesses. Two, two factory and two grocery stores, that's the whole Southbridge. I'm, I mean, come on, we need to give the businesses a break to make other businesses come into town, not keep putting pressure on these businesses and they leave. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Joe Van.
He had his hand up first.
He had it first. Councilor Marquetti.
Thank you. I already spoke once, so I would defer to Counselor Joe Van.
No, that's fine. You're welcome. Fine. That's fine.
Well, all right, I mean, to, to address what Counselor Dow just said, businesses, 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 but we've had this single tax rate for 20 years now, so where are all the businesses? We have been giving them a break for 20 straight years, we have had a single tax rate, and yet, it doesn't seem to be working. I will say one thing, I go to Big Y, and I'm not just picking on Big Y, go to any grocery store around here, and you will see an incredible increase in the cost of food, toilet paper, everything. So, if they're not making money, I'll eat my hat. So, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Joe Van? Counselor Dow.
To the previous speaker's point, it's economics. There's a crisis going on in this country, and this is not the point of our conversation tonight. Our conversation is what's best for the town of Southbridge and the taxpayers of the town of Southbridge. We have this conversation every single year for four years, and we always wait till it's tax classification night to have this conversation, and we spend two hours about how we're going to talk about taxes. I tell the council every year, if you want to talk about it, let's talk about it six months ago, if we're going to go down this road, and what the implications will be to the town. Instead, we spend three hours, have the same conversation, rehash the same stuff, and then at the end of the night, we vote single tax rate. The small mom-and-pop stores are also our taxpayers. They're also the people that live in the house that are struggling, that have to pay the same taxes that we do. And if we want to have a vibrant town in order to attract businesses and keep businesses here, we have to be equitable. We can have a whole social commentary about liberalism and about who's not paying their fair share, and that's fine, that's another conversation. But at the bottom line, there are several businessmen in this audience today that have small places that are commercial properties. And when you shift the burden to them, after a year of COVID, to Councilor Ryan's point, we're going to put them out of business. If we say to Tassi next door, we're going to increase your commercial rates to the businesses that sat, and I just take that as an example, because it's next door, to those businesses that have been there, like Elam Center, who barely survived a COVID year, and then say, hey, by the way, I'm sorry, I'm going to shift the burden to Jeff Tassi, who's now going to have to increase his rates, no different than homeowners have to increase their rates to their two, three, four families. He's barely making a margin now because the increase of goods due to economics of this country, that's unfair to them. To Councilor Ryan's point, now's not the time to shift the burden to those small businesses. We can talk about Big Y and all that, and, and that, but there are numerous small businesses in the town that really make up a huge, I think, part of our commercial base. They're small, independent individuals. Some are home-based, so that's not fair. If you want to talk fear, let's be fear. Also, do your homework. Go on the Division of Local Services and look about what we spend in this town compared to other towns, and you'll see, we do a pretty good job with the amount of money that we spend for the challenges that we have. We can continue to compare ourselves to other towns about what our tax rate is and everything, but they also don't have the similar problems that the town of Southbridge has. So, I fully support a single tax rate today, and if you want to study it, then figure out how that impact is going to be to the overall town, economically and socially. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Dow, then Counselor Lazo.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Lazo.
I just, I agree with the previous speaker. The thing that you have to take into consideration, if you want to talk about businesses, is try and be in one. When they turn around and you have a common vic dealer's license, which is the oldest license in America for taverns to serve, to serve food and beverage, and then you have a department, a building inspector's department, who starts a restaurant license for $100, then makes it $200 a year later, and the fee keeps going up and up, and don't forget your amusement license, and there are so many fees that you pay beyond this. The liquor licensing authority saw it fit not to charge for a liquor license, $1,000, because we were closed, the, the beverage business. You look around town on, you want to talk about the American Optical? Yeah, they're a giant, they got big pockets, deep pockets. But the thing is, COVID hit these little guys, like the coffee shops and the various pubs around town and restaurants. We're surviving, but then you have other people that just want to regulate you. Well, start thinking about ahead of time, and this is where the previous speaker brings it up, what we spend a year in government to run the town, I mean, that's part of the equation, what it takes to make the wheels turn in the town of Southbridge. You know, we talk about an HR department, we talk about a reconstruction, the manager's very conservative on his approach and a lot of how to do it. That's the way we have to think as a government, not just, hey, just tax them and we'll just do it, regulate them and then punish them. We have people struggling to pay their taxes in business. What does the council do five years ago? Eliminate the payment plans. If you don't have it, we don't renew your license. Talk about a foolish thing to do with a pandemic. So, for me, I sit back and I say, this has to be looked at before you get to today. I mean, you'd have to really do some convincing. I have a tremendous amount of experience in business, in government, and I would vote for a single tax rate every shot. Even if I wasn't in business, I would vote, I would vote a single tax rate. So, for myself, in these times, make it even worse to go to a split tax rate. I think it's something that, as the previous speaker said, has to be worked on before the night of presentation, and he's right. In 1988, or 1987, 85, it was Dean Yocabucci up here saying the same thing, doing the same job, and it came out the same results. And we had a much, we had a very conservative manager, we had a very conservative council compared to this one, and still, they were, they were on task for a single tax rate. I, I don't think it's good for the town of Southbridge, especially under the COVID thing. I mean, you have, you have a hospital coming in saying, go to mass mandate and all businesses. Why don't you just, why don't you just kill them all? Everybody says Southbridge is not business-friendly. I think this council, and we're trying to be business-friendly, I don't know, I mean, I'm not going to go on about it, the only thing I can tell you is, a single tax rate is the way to go at this time. Split tax rate's not good for Southbridge. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I agree, I do think a split tax rate is an aggressive tax rate. It's only going to hurt the, some of the individuals out there that we're trying to protect to this day with some grants that are coming through. To previous speakers, I can understand where you're coming from, I do think inflation's one thing that we can't control at this point in time, and I don't think businesses are making money off the inflation. But I also bring the back, back the point of policies of the past that may have hurt our town a little bit. So, I do think we are on upward trend. One thing that Will, it struck me when Will brought this point up, you do a split tax rate, those individuals that have high-priced homes are getting a huge tax cut. They're the ones who are going to benefit the most from it. Matter of fact, Worcester, Worcester's still trying to get out of their split tax rate issue. They're down eight, I think it was a few years ago, they're down 18% when it came to industry. So, I can only see what happens if we decide to, all of a sudden tonight, do a split tax rate without any type of real study for our own town, because one year's not going to cut it. You're talking multiple years. I think we're at a point now where it's, it's growing a little bit here and there. I do think things are happening, I think with this council, it's been a benefit. I don't want to raise my taxes either, but it is what it is, and I have to somehow or another pay for the services within the town that we receive all the time and the good productivity that we receive. My worry is that the small mom-and-pop businesses, just because you own a business doesn't mean you're rich. Just because you own a four, four-person home, doesn't mean you're rich. A lot of these guys that are owning, and gals that are owning these, you know, properties are, are hopefully basing everything on the rent that they receive. And that being said, we raise that rate somehow or another, it's going to trickle right down to the renters, who right now, we have a problem within this country of ours of affordable homes and affordable rents. So, I think it's just going to hurt us down the road, again, with the split tax rate. And lastly, I wish Will the best in his retirement. Good luck to you, and thank you for your service to the community. So, I have.
Very good. Counselor Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, and to all the previous speakers. I, I hear everyone, and we should have talked about this sooner, as a previous speaker stated. I'd like to, over 20% of the town's population is comprised of citizens living below the poverty level. We rank in the 10% level of, of one of the poorest communities in Southbridge. So, without going on and on, I think, as the previous speaker, Counselor Lazo stated at the last meeting, we need to take a look at our schools, and that will attract businesses, and that will change things in this town of Southbridge. My question to the town manager, before we vote on this tonight, can we look at the COVID money being placed into, or utilization of that money for the lowering the tax rate?
Mr. Chairman, just through you to Counselor Katrona. I briefly was able to chat with Counselor Marquetti when they were changing, and I think the website that he referred to, where he found that, when I Googled the same point, came from the National League of Cities, not the federal government. And what the website he was referring to said, that there is a prohibition on the states from using that money for tax reduction. It says, but there's no prohibition on the cities and towns. However, the resources I've been using are the ones from the federal government. There has been no guidance provided to date. We're not allowed to use the money for OPEB, we're not allowed to use it for pension reduction, so that's why, without anything definitive at the federal government on their FAQs, given that they won't let us spend it for so many other things, I was inclined to believe they're not going to let us. Otherwise, I would think every city in town across the Commonwealth already would have applied that money to reduce their local tax rate. In almost every call that I've been on with the administrators and managers, we've all been talking about focusing on the infrastructure, because the guidance hasn't been clear in a lot of areas. So, I'm more than happy to do more research. I don't know if I'm getting, I mean, obviously, you have to consider some of this this evening, and you, there is a timeline when you have to set the tax rate. I'm sure Mr. Canoia will tell you. I don't know how long you could wait to do any further research, but, I mean, this would probably be something I would have to refer to our town council to get a tax specialist to look at, because they would have to go back and, you know, look at the original legislation that was put forward. But again, my, my gut is where, we haven't heard of any other city or town using it, and I can't find any direct guidance on the federal government's websites that I don't think we can, you know, I'm not saying we can't, but I'm just not finding something that says we can. There's, as Mr. Marquetti pointed out, there's no prohibition, but the difference between the CARES money and the ARPA money is upfront, you would get an indication whether or not you could use the CARES money. They would tell you, up or down, whether you could use it. Here, we spend it, and then we have to go back and reconcile with them, and I would always caution that I don't want to be that first town manager that tells you, yes, and they come back and say, no, you can't do that, and then we find ourselves in a hole trying to pay it back.
Thank you for the answer. It was brought up earlier, so at least wanted to throw it out there. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Steves.
Um, yeah, through you to the manager. How much do we have in free cash at the moment? Because I know some, we can consider using some of that for this. Well, I know Ms. Harnoyz is here, she might have that number, I don't have it off the top of my head. The, the one thing, though, that I would caution people is, when you, when you do something like that, if you use, these ARPA monies are one-time monies. Right. And there's always been, you know, a school of thought that you use those for one-time projects, such as these large infrastructure projects. I can tell you, I was in another community that they, they switched the tax rate, they shifted it one way, then they brought it back, and then they shifted it again later. And, you know, in one instance, the residents, they saw the, the reduction the first year, but as we all know, costs go up year over year. So, the very next year, the taxes went back up, and some people were surprised, especially when there was a revaluation in the middle of that. So, using one-time monies for something like a tax rate reduction, you know, I think you have to give a lot of thought to that before you do that. I think, you know, just my personal opinion, long-term return on your investment value, creating public value might be in these infrastructure projects that will last for, you know, decades and provide services and relief to the residents elsewhere. In a way, though, too, think about it, when you do that indirectly, you would be reducing some of the, the taxes in that we're using that money to do those infrastructure projects that we would otherwise be bonding and putting into the tax rate. So. That's true. One way or another, this, this money goes to benefit our taxpayers. Well, I was specifically asking about free cash, though. No, I, I know you are, but I was just, a little bit of side commentary, but I would have to defer to Ms. Harnoyz if she has some idea about the. She is here. Current free cash numbers. Or maybe even stabilization, considering the whole point of stabilization is emergencies, and we're kind of in a hole at the moment.
The free cash has not been certified.
It has not.
For the town. And if you remember, many years back, we built free cash into the budget, and it's probably one of the worst things that you ever want to do. You don't want to, you know, you just want to use it for one, for one time, like the town manager was, was discussing.
What about stabilization? I mean, I know that that, that requires a two-thirds vote, and, and it's a, and I, as I recall, we have like 3 million and something in stabilization, don't we?
There's over $4 million in stabilization, but we've worked really hard to build that up, and that's, you know.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just thinking that, given the situation that we're in, if we were to do one of those two things, that would, that would be a way to, to lower the tax rates while still treating everybody equally, because you'd do it across the board rather than having, rather than having a split rate. That way, everybody, everybody would benefit to some degree. I'm just trying, trying to throw things out, trying to throw ideas out there and to think about them a little bit and see what, and you're probably right, Counselor Joe Van, we probably should have had some, a discussion like this a month ago or something. We did actually have something like this discussed for, what, like, two cycles ago? We had some extensive discussions at general government that went on for hours, where we talked about some of these ideas, and, and then we decided not to do anything with them.
Mr. Chairman, can I just? I just needed some clarification here for the purposes of this evening's discussion. We're discussing a tax rate classification, not the budget. The budget was already set. We'd have to go back into the budget to make any changes in the budget, am I not correct? To make any changes to the tax rate. Tonight's discussion is only tax rate classification. That's it. If we want to reduce the budget, you've got to do it at budget time. You can't do it tonight. Tonight's the classification hearing. So, can we end his presentation and move to the classification motions? And I know other people that speak, but I just want clarification on this, because I think that's the process. I think we're talking about stuff that we really can't do tonight. It's just a classification hearing and vote the tax rate. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Canoia, you've asked to speak.
Yeah, a couple of things. So, if we don't act upon this tonight, which I think we have to and we should, if we don't act upon this tonight, getting the tax rate set and the bills mailed by December 30th, December 31st, is truly in jeopardy. I'm not going to say it wouldn't ha, couldn't happen, but it's truly in jeopardy. And if we don't get the tax bills out, then they're not due 30 days from when you mail them, they're due on May 1st. Okay? So, there's cash flow considerations. And the reason, the reason we have to decide this tonight is, so tomorrow morning, Karen and myself will be sending information to the Department of Revenue to get the tax rate certified. We're pretty good at it, it happens pretty quickly. But we need that tax rate to be certified. On Thursday, I'm working with Munis on one factor of this. It's the first time we've ever done it. I had to book somebody several months ago for this. Next Thursday, I'm working with somebody with Munis again to do the tax bills, and these people book out a year in advance. I don't know when we'd get one of these people again, or a competent one. So, that's why I say the tax. So that's why I say the tax, if we don't do it now, the tax, getting the tax bills out is truly in jeopardy. I just want to make that clear. And secondly, I want to reiterate to Ms. Harnoys's, Ms. Harnoys's point. So previously, we did use free cash to lower the tax rate. And five years ago, I took a course on municipal leadership, on the finance presentations, which was, what's his name, Sean Cronin and some others, they talked about, that's a horrible, horrible way to budget. We've, to Ron and San Angelo and Karen's credit, we got away, we got away from that, which was a real, that's a great financial move in, for the future. I don't really see, you guys can do what you want, this is my last one, but I think that would be a lousy thing to do. It's just not, it's just not a good financial move. And the third thing is, if you do something to lower the tax, the average tax bill or the tax levy artificially, you do it this year, a big amount of money, great. What happens next year? So not only do they get 1%, 2%, 3%, whatever, they get whatever you took away this year artificially, they could hit with that on top of it. So just my opinion, I think, I don't think those are good financial moves. Thank you.
Counsel Lazo.
Yeah, a lot of good discussion, probably right at the wrong time. Can we not vote it tonight? Absolutely, it's not against the law. We can put it in reverse and work on it. And then when you're worried about your bond rating later, and all your other financials as a, if you treat your town like a business, you have to have your ducks in a row, your budget done by a specific date, your tax rate set by a specific date, and the minute that doesn't happen, it's dysfunctional, where community, the DOR and everybody starts looking at you saying you have issues. Bottom line is, this town hasn't done a hell of a lot of cutting of budgets. You really, you really don't experience bad budgets. We've been on a great roll. I remember two and a half went into, went into force. I remember the budgets where, you know, we didn't do our budget on time, because we didn't know what the state revenues were, and the state revenues got postponed. Oh, you'll find out in June. Oh, no, in September. We went around the year without a budget. I remember those days. We are a well-oiled machine right now, as a community. You can hand it off and say, Finance Department does a great job. The town manager, I pass, I think it's more of a team concept of getting that budget settled. We can have this argument over whether we're paying too much taxation or that. Take it up when you're cutting the budget, or adding to the budget, or building fire stations, or building schools. These are the things that bring your taxes up. Tonight's not the night, as Mr. Jovan said. It's not the night to talk about free cash. It's a night to set the tax rate. But I'll tell you what, when we swing around to the budget season, that's when you got to start thinking about what you're doing tonight. So then you work it the rest of the year to see what you want that tax rate to be. Do you want to use extra revenues in other accounts to levy the taxes? We've done that, too, under Florence Chandler. We've done that under Jack Howley, various other managers. This is just to set the tax rate. I just hope we just let it go, set the tax rate, show fiscal responsibility as a community. Then you want to go have, have at it on the budget and income, and where we're spending our money, and staffing, that's a discussion for another day. But today, like Will says, this is his last one. But the thing is, fiscal responsibility is to meet those due dates on budget completion, adoption. Set the tax rate, the Department of Revenue gets their paperwork, the bills go out, the wheels keep turning in Southbridge. So for me, I'm done talking on this issue. Let's call it a day on the presentation and move on to the vote.
Counsel Lazo.
I'll be very, very quick. No, I don't support anything superficially lowering the tax rate. We've gone down that road once before, failed miserably. Second, I'd like to move on with this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We all sat, we pretty much said what we need to say. Very good. Let's move on. Agenda item number nine, vote to establish a tax classification factor of 1.0 for tax purposes. The Board of Assessors recommends a yes vote for a single tax rate.
So moved.
Thank you.
I think we're discussed out. Very good. Roll call vote.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
And Counsel Steves?
No.
I believe that's seven, two.
Yep.
Motion passes. Item number 10, vote to adopt varied classifications of property for tax purposes, including open space discount and residential exemption. The Board of Assessors recommends a no vote.
Move for discussion.
Very good.
Second.
So we want discussion?
No, no, I would just.
Oh, no discussion?
Because I'm not moving.
All right. Okay. Very good. Roll call vote.
Counsel Adams?
Yes, all right, I'm sorry, no. Three before and a loop over there, usually it starts the next letter over.
This is confusing.
Counsel Katrona?
No.
Counsel Daniel?
No.
Counsel Dow?
No.
Counsel Jovan?
No.
Counsel Lazo?
No.
Counsel Marquetti?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
No.
And Counsel Steves?
No.
That's nine, zero. Motion.
Let's not go.
Motion doesn't pass, right? It's a no vote, there were nine no votes. Okay. Agenda item number 11, vote to adopt a single tax rate for all classes of property. The Board of Assessors recommends a yes vote.
So moved.
Roll call vote.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
And Counsel Steves?
No.
I believe that's seven, two. Motion passes. Very good. Let's move on to agenda item number 17. Vote to confirm the appointment of John Brackett to the Southbridge Airport Commission effective immediately through June 30, 2024. State ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't get any paperwork on this appointment, reappointment. And I thought we had, General Government had passed a new town council rule that all appointments would go through the subcommittee.
I believe that's correct. I was asked to move this forward, and at the time, I felt it was appropriate to do so. But I'm willing to listen to the counsel's pleasure. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. That was the same question I had this morning. We did vote on that on November 1st, I believe it was. So thank you, Counsel Ryan, for listening to me for a few minutes on that issue. I don't want to hold up the progress of this, but this will be the last time I vote on this subject, on this idea, or this, this type of agenda item, unless the two chairs of the subcommittee and the town council agree mutually on it, moving straight forward to the town council. We think we've beat this to a pulp, and it's still popping up. Thank you.
Anyone else?
What?
Counsel Steves.
Since we didn't see it at subcommittee, I'll bounce it through you to the manager. Have you had a chance to talk to, talk to Mr. Brackett or the Airport Commission? Can you tell us anything about this person? What he's done on the commission so far, if it's being reappointed?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, no, I have not. I typically have called all, in most cases, or every case that I get, a brand-new appointee that I haven't met. In this case, I did not see this paperwork. So no, I have not spoken to Mr. Brackett.
Counsel Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I know Mr. Brackett, I've known him my entire life. He was in the Air Force, and he was a Southbridge firefighter, a long line of firefighters in Town of Southbridge. I know he works very hard up at the airport. I've had many conversations with him about the airport through just general conversations. He's always up there mowing, he's doing other work up there. We do not have people banging down the doors for Airport Commission.
That's true.
I do concede that these should go to subcommittee as you wish, but I see no reason not to reappoint John Brackett. He is qualified for the position, he has served for a number of years, and does a lot of work up there with the rest of the Airport Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Lazo. I, too, know John Brackett, grew up with him, coached his family in Pop Warner, very good relationship with the family, bound to the fire department. I do agree with Counsel Adams. This is a reappointment, though, this isn't somebody that's, that's new. So when you do a reappointment, yeah, I think we should have, you know, something in front of us for the people that don't know John Brackett, to find out, you know, what type of person he is. But the thing is, as a volunteer, as a person in Town of Southbridge, I think he's a standout guy, and I think he would meet the criteria. But again, if we start a process as a council, and I know there are some things that go to my subcommittee, that, don't waste my time at subcommittee, it's an automatic. I know we've talked about this, and the chairman of the subcommittee, and we push it forward for a reason. And the reason would be that the timeframe on a grant, or the appointment, because training's going to start, there are reasons why we push it to the council. I'm not sure there's a reason on this one, but I'm going to vote for John Brackett, because I do know him, and I'm fortunate to know him. Thank you.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I agree with Counsel Marquetti regarding the thing coming up here before we see it or we know about it, or pass down in the meeting, we have some time. But I'm going to excuse, sorry for tonight, because I know John, I used to be with him on the fire department, he's a very great guy. Doesn't mean we have to break all the rules, but like Counsel Lazo say, it's a reappointment, so we already know who he is, and I don't think we should delay it and bring it back. We should vote for it and keep moving forward. But hopefully, in the future, that doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Marquetti.
Wait, if your word for this person is good enough for me, I'm just making a point, that we pass a law, we pass a rule, it gets in our, in our rule books, it's in the town, sometimes we have things that are in the town charter, we just seem to ignore it. Now we got something that we recently passed to put it on the town council rules, and now we're going to ignore it. So about it, your word is good enough for me. I'm sure he's a very qualified, fine person to put on the committee. I don't have a problem supporting him. I'm kind of curious of what General Government chairperson has to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I had, I'm going to be honest, I had no notification that this had happened, that this, I was never notified about posting this on my agenda. However, mistakes happen. And, you know, I try to be very people-oriented, things happen, people are, we're having transition in office staff, things happen. Let this be an example of, we did just pass a rule, please don't let this happen again, because next time, I may not be as gracious. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 18, vote to accept the Fiscal Year 21 Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, in the amount of $5,980, and to authorize the town manager, manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
What have I got here? Counselor Lazo.
Yes, this went to subcommittee, and it was voted unanimously for confirmation.
Chief.
Good evening again. Obviously, this, the grants are what we build a lot of our fire department on. This is a repeat grant that we've been, we've put in for, again. This is the 2021 Emergency Management Performance Grant. This year's funding is $5,980. This is a matching grant, we do pay for our Everbridge system for the townwide alerting system, so that is, that is the share portion of it. This year's requests for ballistic vests and helmets, additional trauma bags with clot gauze and tourniquets, some sharps containers that we use for our townwide community sharpscrusher. I hope that you all had a chance to look at my memo, and along with the associated grant, I hope that you could appoint this and make this move forward. Thank you.
Very good. Discussion. Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did, I did discuss this at the subcommittee level. I'm not opposed to the grant. I think it's, I've always liked grants, especially a grant like this, that we don't have to put forward extra funds. You've already figured out a way to match something that we're already spending money on, so that was a wise use of that, to match this fund. I did question the use of it, only because I thought, you know, to buy, they look like World War II helmets and bulletproof vests for the EMTs. I didn't really, I didn't think it was a good use of the grant. I know that you brought up Newtown, and I'm sure everybody's got Detroit on their mind, what happened last week. But Southbridge isn't Newtown, and Southbridge isn't Detroit. So I just don't see something like that happening here. If it did, I suppose it could happen. I suppose it could happen, so I'm not naive to think that it could never happen. But why, why would, I don't know why you would send EMTs in first. For one thing, I don't think, like I said, I'm not opposed to the grant, I just kind of was questioning the use. I also watched the Fire Station Building Committee meeting, that Counsel Jovan is the chair of. And I, I know that there was a lot of equipment that was mentioned at the meeting, I think there was a representative of KBA who said he wanted to do a walk-in, because there was a lot of equipment, pieces of equipment which may or not, may not have been incorporated. He wasn't aware of it. I would think you'd want to spend more, get more grants to fund that fire station, try and keep the cost down on that fire station. But, you know, like I said, I'll support the grant, just was questioning the use, that's all. Thank you.
Counsel Adams, then Counsel Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I will, I have just, correction, these Kevlar helmets, they're probably, no more than the design itself, probably 20 years old, or something like that, but they're still, they're still utilized. They now use mostly what they call the mid helmet, which is a little different, just a little history on that one. But it's a sad state that we actually have to ask the firefighters and EMTs to come in with flak jackets and helmets. I mean, a lot of cities actually go to this because of the thing, and you're right, we're not, some of these other cities have happened, too, but obviously, preparing for the worst, unfortunately, we prepare for the worst, hoping it never happens. So we, we, you know, I, kudos to the fire department for doing it. I know I've talked to Chief Woodson about the Kevlar vests and all that kind of stuff, and how does that work for them, so they could properly rotate it out, because they go bad after a period of time. I'm sure these bulletproof vests do, at the same time, whatever's instituted inside of them. But I appreciate the chief and everybody else that looking forward to properly plan for a worst-case scenario, and thank goodness there was a grant out there that could help offset some of that cost, or take care of that cost for us. But I would say, again, you know, back in the LA riots that happened, it wasn't, it wasn't a pretty place to be, and I know we're not Los Angeles, nor the size, but, you know, it could happen anywhere. And I just appreciate you guys being prepared, and we just ask you to do more with less. It's the way it works, sometimes, in the service community field. Thank you.
Counsel Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I certainly appreciate Counsel Marquetti's comments about his concerns that, hey, Southbridge is not like other towns. But that's the point. We don't know where this may happen. So Newtown, little community on the, in Connecticut, you know, has this tragedy. We explained, and I said, through my personal experience as a police chief, for over almost 15 years, currently serving on a college campus, small college campus, we all have to prepare for the, for the worst. The way that people respond to incidents, and this was brought up at the meeting, is totally different than what it was 20 years ago.
totally different than what it was 20 years ago. 20 years ago, you would never thought that if you had an active shooter case, that you would have to wait for everybody to get there, get swatted in, they'd all go in. Now it's, if I'm the first policeman there, I'm the first one in the door. Those EMTs come as soon as I clear, we're getting victims out, and those EMTs have to go in. The dynamics has certainly changed. So I certainly appreciate those comments. We don't want that to happen anywhere. Certainly not. To the comments about the fire station, we are actively, just for the public, we're actively searching for any grant that we can. If we could have used this grant for the fire station, we would have applied for it. The comment about extra new, or new, an additional equipment was, the chief went out, got a grant for, to destroy shops and needles and all that. That's because there's an opioid epidemic in this country. People need us to get rid of these needles, it's in the fire station. That was something that came up, and when we talked about, just for the public, when we first did the audit on the building and what we would need, that was done in 2019. Right, maybe even a little bit earlier than that.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Three years later, well, three years ago, we had a tiller truck, that we all know what happened with that. We have a new ladder truck. We now have to tell the architect, new piece of equipment, that's what we're talking about, new piece of equipment, different configuration. We also talked about, so those type of things go into a firehouse. We're not talking about building it any bigger, we're just saying, we're doing due diligence on the fire station. What do you have now? Make sure it goes into that station. Don't forget about it. Because as everybody says, accountability and oversight. Have project oversight. Counsel Katrona says it all the time, and I don't disagree. We now have an owner's project manager that's going through that project to make sure that we account for every piece of equipment. So I just want to bring that up because it was brought up. I know it's not on the agenda, but that's the reason why. So times have changed. Great that they're going for grants to protect firefighters in our worst moments. Thank you.
Counsel Lozlo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just got a question. I have a, maybe came to me a mistake or maybe not, invoice, and if you turn it, you get that grant, five eight seven one point sixty-seven, but it's added one twenty-eight sixty-four, the amount will be six thousand. I just want to make sure that clear, we void it only on the five eight seven one sixty-seven or on the whole amount. There is no question in the future.
So the total grant is 6,031 that we actually purchased things to go towards the cost of the grant that we're going to be receiving. If you go to this, the page, description of activity and expense, Everbridge was $5,871 and some change. We didn't have the matching, 100% of the matching, so we had to add in shops containers for community shops crusher to get over that 5980.
So we're going to vote for the 6,031 right now or just for the five eight seven one sixty-seven?
Five eight seventy-one.
Okay.
Five nine eighty.
Yeah, five.
Five nine eighty. Yep. As the.
As the matching.
Okay. Thank you. There's three different numbers here, I just want to make sure.
That's very good. Counsel Lozlo.
Yeah, the discussion of the equipment, back to the original point of the grant, we're an evolving society. I know that the previous speaker, one of the previous speakers, I served with, on school committee, as an evolving society, nobody thought we'd have a police officer in a school building. Nobody ever thought we'd have cameras on our doors in lockdowns. And the reason why we do this is to be proactive, so it doesn't happen like the other communities, you try and be on your A-game. As far as a firefighter wearing a bulletproof vest, doesn't surprise me nowadays, absolutely not. A helmet, whether it is a helmet to go in on a shooting or a helmet going in on a fire, it is equipment needed to deal with both sides. We are an evolving society, and some of the things we're not happy about evolving, but you're better off being proactive about it. And Southbridge has always been kind of out front with a lot of this stuff, thanks to the management of both our public safety facilities. As far as the new fire department, give it time, we'll get there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chief. Item number 19, vote to accept Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, MIIA, grant to replace exercise equipment at the police department and for standing desks at the town hall in the amount of $13,823.54 and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counsel Lozlo.
Recommendation to subcommittee was unanimous to pass.
Very good. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council, Mr. Town Manager, thanks for having me tonight. This grant originally started at the town hall. I was asked if we would take it over and complete it, and all that they asked for was a few stand-up desks. We said that's a win-win for us. This equipment originally went into our building in 1997. This grant essentially pays to replace most of it.
Any discussion? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The question I have is the, the grant level tiers says that for a certain amount of subscribers, you get a certain amount of money. So you're getting 13, it's going to cost 13,825, but are we only covered for 70, no, I take it, 7,500. So does that mean that we're going to be paying an additional amount for this, or?
Negative. Through you, Mr. Chair, the grant was up to $15,000 for the amount of people that we have in our community.
Oh, so it's the amount of people, okay.
Thirteen thousand is what you're saying.
All right. Thank you. I thought it was the amount of people that'll be using it.
No.
All right. Thank you. Could counselors come in there and use it? Because I could use some exercise.
Absolutely.
I think the chief and I have had this discussion.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 20, vote to accept the fiscal year 22 Body worn Cameras Grant Program in the amount of $55,780 and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counsel Lozlo.
Recommendation to subcommittee was favorable to pass.
Thank you. Chief.
Just quickly, we're willing to subject our offices to constant recording, and that's a good faith effort, in my opinion, of being transparent with the people that live in our community. During the completion of this grant, we conducted a survey on social media. 85% of the people that live here were in support of this initiative. The use of body cameras increases the accountability of our offices, of the people that we police. It's the best way to show the public how we actually interact with our citizens every single day. It helps build more trust than we already have, because I believe we have a lot of it, and it helps reduce the time that it takes in investigating internal affairs matters. It's going to be done in phases if this is approved tonight. The first phase is, here I am, requesting that this be approved, the town manager would sign that contract, it gets sent back to the state. Acceptance of the grant, it simply means that we have the intention of implementing a program. The second and the third phases would be me working with the union, implement this body camera program that works for all of us, and then the purchase of the equipment once that agreement's made. During that phase, we'd also start doing demonstrations in the community, we'd post on social media, just so the community is aware of what we're doing, why we're doing it, how we're doing it, and when it's going to be done. Phase four would be to train our staff in the use of the cameras. Phase five would be when it's active. This grant ends on October 31st, 2022, so in future budgets, you'll have me in front of you. I mentioned this in subcommittee, asking for, it's about $15,000 per year to maintain after the initial setup. I personally think it is absolute money well spent. Not only that, but MYa, I'm working right now with them, I think we're going to get back about $10,000 on our insurance policy if officers have body cameras. So the 15,000, about, give or take, that I'll be asking for during every budget cycle going forward, if this is all approved and in place, we get about 10,000 of that back on the other side with the MYa policy. The grant, we have about six, well, not about, we have six months from the time the town manager signs it, it goes back to the state. When the state representative signs it and sends it back to our community, whatever they date, we have six months from that point on to implement this program. So with that said, I'll keep you informed as we move forward. If it doesn't end up happening, the money goes back to the state. If it ends up happening, we have a great program and a great initiative for many, many years to come in our community.
Counsel Lozlo.
Yeah, again, I'd like to just take a moment to commend the chief on being proactive. This is what I was talking about. Who would ever think that your police officers would have cameras on their chest 35 years ago, 20 years ago, in the town of Southbridge? But again, alleviating liability helps on the insurance front, and it gets rid of the he said, she said, no, that happened. Well, with the camera, you just hit the button and the eye in the sky, don't lie. Thank you.
Counsel Lozlo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Chief, thank you for working hard to have that done. Hopefully, will be complete. I know you're going to be working too on the way they're going to be used on all the time or when they're out of the cruisers.
If I could, through you, Mr. Chair, every single time we have an interaction with a citizen, it's going to be on.
Going to be on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's very, very good move for the town of Southbridge, and like the chief say, we will have more trust from the citizen and the police to be able to communicate together and have more trust and working together as a community and a safety public. Thank you.
Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned that there'll be about 15 grand a year afterward. Does that include replacing cameras, or how long, how long do these cameras last?
No, it does not. This, the initial setup is, is for 38 body cameras, everybody including me, and then what happens is, as, the life expectancy, five years, I'm hoping, but we'll replace gradually, we're not going to do all 38 again. The most expensive component of all this is actually the storage, because every, every shift, eight-hour shifts, four, five, six officers on a shift, everything gets downloaded after every shift. So the data storage is pretty ridiculous.
All right, it is.
Quite honestly. So that's, that's a big chunk of this, the initial purchase is a big chunk of it, the training, when they come down and train, it's not a do-it-all, charging stations similar to our portable radios, all these have, have to be charged every shift, so the startup cost is pretty, pretty big.
Is this data storage going to be at the police station or online or in the cloud? It's in the cloud. And as far as people access, if events happen, how does the public know where to get this video?
They'll be able to, through you, Mr. Chair, they'll be able to file a information request like they would if they wanted an accident report, if they want a body camera footage. It's public record.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you. Just, I just kind of want to go off that a little bit because it got me thinking. So would this, for the public's information, be something that's stored permanently within the police department, or is there a time limit in which video information would be deleted? You know, most businesses usually after five, 10 years, transition all those records out to make up for the, make the storage back. So I wanted to know what, what the policy would be for the department to hold on to all these videos.
I believe, right now, we're working on a policy where it will be stored for a year. If there's no incidents, it just overwrites itself. But there's also camera storage, and we're working with a vendor on this still. Some rewrite every 30 days, some do every 90 days, but we'd like to ultimately get that to a year with the technology that's out there. But again, this is a lot of data. But if there's no incidents that are reported within 30 days, I feel comfortable we can rewrite that data. Because 30 days after you have an initial interaction with a police officer is a long time, if something serious happened. Or any arrest, anything like that would be stored much longer. But just the everyday interactions that we have, if there's no complaint lodged or no issue or no reason for us to save that, it would be rewritten. But an arrest situation, a car stop, things like that, we would save longer.
I'll be interested in seeing what that policy looks like after it's developed.
You'll see it.
Counsel Steves.
If I can follow up on that, too. Just double check with what state law says, because I know that's a whole bunch of state, public record storage laws out there that can be really ridiculous in some cases. So I don't know if they cover this kind of thing at all.
Because this is all new. I know with typical OF, it's an incident report or an accident report, if there's no issue, it's a year. You can get rid of it. So we'll see what they decide with body cameras.
Right. Okay. Anyone else? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I have a couple questions and maybe a comment or two. There's different total amounts in here, and I'm just trying to get it straight. The grant is for 55,780. The cost is 66,630, is that correct? So there would be 11,000, we would have to chip in 11,000? Am I reading that right?
Well, the amount we're looking for is a 55,700. I know there's a cost difference, I believe it's like a little over $11,000.
Okay.
The cost for the startup of the grant is equipment only, and we're going to work with a vendor about the storage and the software.
All right.
So what we need to start the program, to build the program, to get them out on the street initially would be the 55,780. And then I got to figure out how we're storing data, what vendor we're using, how many licenses we need, but to get this moving, and I don't believe I'll have to come back until when we start discussing budgets for FY for July 1st, 2022. I think we'll be okay with this original number to start the program.
All right.
I don't think, I know, we'll be fine until July 1st.
I'm also kind of curious as to who wrote this narrative for this.
Lieutenant Belros.
Who?
Lieutenant Steve Belros, he's a second shift lieutenant. He wrote the narrative.
All right. I notice, I noticed down at the bottom here, it says, "The department maintains a strong commitment to the community policing philosophy and draws guidance from the president's task force on 21st century policing. The pillars noted in the task force report provide a roadmap of best practices for success in building agency legitimacy, relationship of trust, and the community and high levels of police service. These have long been the goals of the department." The president's task force on 21st century policing was created by President Obama, and under that program, there were several pillars. One was building trust and legitimacy. There was another one on technology and social media, which is what you're doing tonight. There was another one on policy and oversight, and the recommendation was some form of civilian oversight of law enforcement. So do you, do you support that?
No, not in this community.
You don't support that part of it? Okay. But you do support the president's task force, right?
I don't support it 100%, no. I don't support President Obama at all, if you want to know my political opinion, but I do support some of his objectives.
All right. Okay, well, the rest of the narrative, I thought was kind of like, kind of a downer, really, when you look at it. It's like, I didn't know if Southbridge was that, was that a, I don't know, poorest city even Massachusetts? You know, sometimes you got to look at some of the positive things about Southbridge. There's a lot of success in town, you know, not just, I'm not saying we turn our backs under, under privilege, but we also have to respect success in town and have some pride in Southbridge. So I was just kind of like, looking at this narrative and wondering, is this what Southbridge is like? Because I don't feel it's that way, but, okay. But that's all I have for now.
If I could, Mr., if I could speak to just that part of it, the problem, the issue with the grants are they're looking for that type of data, why your community is in need of a grant. This is a very competitive grant, so I don't know a lot of the things that, you're right, it does depict Southbridge as a, as a bad community. I don't believe that at all. It's just one of those things with these grants, any type of grant, it's a good question, valid point, state, state grants, federal grants, we have to describe the community in ways where we can compete with other communities. More wealthy communities couldn't put this in, they wouldn't get this kind of funding, because they're not in need of the funding as much as we are. So I agree with you. Point taken on that.
All right. Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
Counsel Jovan.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, one of the successes I truly feel is our police department and our public safety. I've said it time and time again, our police department is truly representative of the community when it goes to the makeup of our community through the diversity that the police chief has in, in the department. I fully support body cameras. Back twenty years ago, when the community policing grants came out for cameras and cruisers, I put those in my cruisers because they do protect the officer. And they protect the community. We, our police officers have great interactions with our community, but there are some incidents. We have a very busy police department. And yes, and I know writing those grants, it's tough, because you do have to portray some of the things of what the need is, but Counselor Katrona pointed out earlier, twenty percent of our community is in poverty. We can't hide from that. That's what our community is. And we're looking for these grants, because eventually, the state will say, you need to have body cameras in, on your police officers. And the chief's being proactive to get that, and that's how you get those grants. So we do have a lot of great things in the community, but there are some, some trouble and things. And we, as a council, are working to accentuate the positive, while knowing what some of the shortcomings are. But let's move on. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, Chief. Two questions. It's gonna be on auxiliary police too, as well, when this?
That's a very good question. There will be no more auxiliary police. As of July first, by the time this program's implemented, due to the police reform bill, we will be losing the auxiliaries. So it'll be just full-time police officers.
The second question, if everything, yesterday and everything go through the grant, when we can see him on the police officer?
We have, again, six months from the time of when this is signed, so I would say, if it's signed within the next few weeks, I'm hoping by summer. We only have till June. If it doesn't work out, I'll be reporting back to the council, explaining why it didn't work out, and we'll have to try another avenue. Hopefully, I come to you way before that.
Thank you.
And I just don't wanna give you a hard date, but it has to be by June.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. There being no further discussion. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Good job, Chief.
Item number twenty-one, vote to approve the school department request to declare the nineteen-ninety-nine Ford F-350 as surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Jovan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the rest of the council. This did not come out to EHS, because we've already declared it as surplus, and it was just transferred to another department. So we had already declared it surplus, so this is just to dispose of it however the town sees fit. So that's why I didn't call just to mean to have this agenda item. So I would just add that, vote, recommend a friendly amendment, if I could, and recommend to the town manager a disposal of, according to best practices.
Very good. Did you get that, Mary?
Yep.
Great. Okay.
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, typically, what we do, Ms. Farren, as you know, did lead the employment of Southbridge. We're still waiting to get an additional clerk in the office, but typically with these things, there are several online auction sites, and we have used, I've used one in the past, we have an account on one. This will be put out there, and more often than not, somebody will buy it. If it's still drivable, they'll fix it. If it's parts, they'll take it. So something like this will go relatively quick.
Counselor Lozo.
So this truck's gonna go to an auction site?
More often than not. If we have no other use internally, typically, we try and find a use for it. But if not, most of our vehicles, I know the chief has someone that usually comes in and buys them. My experience in other towns, and some of our other equipment, we put on online auction sites.
Okay, because I'm very familiar with this truck. It was up for discussion earlier. It's one that would go to the auction, would bring in pretty good money. No matter what anybody says about that truck, you know, I think, I think it would be good for the town to make some money on it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there something wrong with the truck?
We transferred it over to the school department, because they had a need for it. And at the time, I believe when it went to the school department, it was, I'll let Heather answer, but it went to the school department, because they were waiting on the new trucks that the town council had authorized them, well, had, they had bought through capital. And then they kept it at the schools as a spare vehicle. So I don't know if they don't have a need for it anymore, or what, but.
The vehicle has been down at my yard for the past year, at least. I know that is true. It transferred from the fire department to the school department while they were waiting. They did a little work to get it operational again. It stopped working, and they decided not to fix it again, and stored it there at my facility, until they decided whether they were gonna get rid of it or not. So it has been non-operational at my facility for over a year. And I can't tell you what's wrong with it, because they haven't asked us to look at it. They repair their own vehicles, but.
Thank you. That, I mean, that was my question, what's wrong with it? It's just not working.
Right.
Not a really good answer.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Vehicle not being used will be more risky for a lot of parts to go bad. So if we have a chance to sell it and get fifty dollars, if you park for twenty days, thirty days, you get twenty dollars. My second question is, the town manager, are you gonna post it on the town website when that truck is gonna go on the auction, to the residents, or the people know about auction for the town of Southbridge, or the equipment is gonna be sold? A lot of different towns do that. When you're online, Facebook, they see that. Why would we do that as well in the town of Southbridge?
When I was in charge of it in one of my prior communities, that was my policy. Now that we have new people coming in, we're gonna be looking at everything we've done, so it shouldn't be a problem. Typically, you post on your website, you put something on a bulletin board downstairs near the clerks, saying that you're gonna have this, and you include the website that you're gonna use. There are people that scour these municipal website, auction websites, daily, you know, looking for these types of things. So there'll be people that are interested, but yes, we can put it on the, the website under the news when we go to do it.
Thank you. That will give more chance for the residents to know what's going on, or when that truck was sold, or they have a chance to bid on it if they really need it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number twenty-two, vote to adopt the proposed Town of Southbridge Federal Grant Policy and Procedures Manual to establish written policies as required, and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. So moved.
Second.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was recommended unanimously through the subcommittee. Karen actually did quite a great presentation on it, so.
Any questions? Any discussion? Counselor Steves.
Quick observation. As I recall from the, from the meeting, didn't Karen tell us to take off that section about having the manager sign all related documents? Since this isn't really, we're not actually approving any grants, we're just approving the policy for the grants.
Yeah, there you go. Move up to the mic.
If I recall correctly. Yeah, she's nodding over there. Okay.
That's correct, Counselor Steves. I tried to get that corrected, but they, they left on that authorize a town manager to sign all related documents. That can be struck off of there.
Yeah.
It would just be as required.
Just as required?
Okay.
Okay. I'll take that as a friendly amendment?
Mm-hmm. I'll accept it.
Mary, did you get that?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? All those in favor? No one opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number twenty-three, vote to ratify the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Pilot Agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Consolidated Edison Clean Energy Business for the Assessment of Taxes for Personal Property Located at Zero Clements Hill Road, Parcel Zero One Seven Dash Zero Zero One Dash Zero 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 One, and authorize the town manager to sign the agreement and all related documents. So moved.
Second.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended by the subcommittee unanimously. This is quite technical, and Will went into great detail, so I would like if you presented a little bit of a brief.
I'm sorry, is there a question, or do you want me to explain?
Just, just a brief summarization of it for the entire council.
Okay. So that parcel mentioned, the developer is gonna build a two-point-three-megawatt solar-producing facility there. They received their permits and all their approvals from the planning board about two years ago. COVID delayed it all, and they tell me they're gonna start construction in the spring, somewhere around March, I think, or pre-spring. This pilot is more of a valuation agreement. It just decides, it fixes the assessed values and depreciation schedules on all of the equipment over a twenty-year period. In my opinion, it's fair to both the town and to the developer. But my opinion, my, my concern is the town, and it's fair to the town.
Any other questions? Counselor Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This land that the solar farm is gonna be going on, that's twenty-one acres, correct?
I'm not sure exactly. I don't know.
So the, the solar farm is in lieu of taxes?
Could you repeat?
The solar farm is in lieu of taxes, right?
No, it, it's called the pilot, Payment in Lieu of Taxes, which is a little bit of a misnomer, misnomer. That's what they're called, but they're more of a valuation agreement, agreement over the twenty years. These taxes are for the personal property only, the equipment only, they're not for the real estate. The real estate will be taxed additionally.
Well, how much would the taxes be on the, on the personal property, if we didn't agree to this?
Maybe similar to what the pilot is, but they would be contentious. This fixes, fixes it for both the town and the developer. When I say similar, the, there's always a question about, it's, it's high-tech equipment, it's depreciating faster than the town is, is allowing for it, so the valuation would, in some cases, the valuation would be lower. So it, it's similar. And in fact, the legislation here that's referenced on the front says that the valuation has to be similar to full and fair cash value. Again, it just, it allows stability for both parties.
The twenty-seven thousand, six hundred per year, that's the payments, but that's to be determined, correct?
No, that's fixed, right?
We don't know that's what it's gonna be, according to that, the paperwork. It says to be determined.
Okay, I see your point. I thought you were referencing in future, future years. It's to be determined, but the developer has approvals for that amount of DC nameplate wattage. That's their goal, to maximize every cent of it, every, every bit of it. If it goes any higher than that, the revenues will increase. If it goes lower than that, the revenues would decrease. I really don't see why they would go any lower, though, because if they're approved for that, they're gonna try to maximize their, their income for their project.
Right, okay. So the land there right now is worth, according to your, your website, is worth two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, two-hundred. Now, there's solar panels up on Dresser Hill Road. How much is the land up there worth?
Typically, typically, it's about fifty thousand dollars per acre, with three to five acres per megawatt, typically. More efficient use of it would be a little bit less land, less landed at higher value. Typically, that's what it would be.
Well, I was looking at some of the lots up there on Dresser, off Dresser Hill Road, and some of them are worth, one's almost worth a million dollars, is that correct?
It is correct, but that's a huge facility. I forget how many megawatts, but six or seven might have been.
But it's about the same acreage, no? About twenty-one acres, I think.
Yeah, but it's not just the acreage. So it's the land, the prime site, which is what the solar panels would be on, and then everything else is called excess land at a much, much lower rate.
Right, okay. So do you think the land up there on, on Clements Hill Road, do you think that that will increase in value, and that, and that would be taxed?
Yeah, it will increase, it probably will increase in value. I haven't analyzed it, for your question here. I recall in two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen, when the owner at that time took it out of, it was in chapter sixty-one A, and he took it out, he let the, he just elected not to continue it, so he didn't really take it out, he just discontinued the applying for it. And when he did, he indicated it was gonna be commercial space, commercial land, not, not solar way back then. So it was converted to, and back then, if you recall, the Casella stuff was still going on, and there were other uses they were trying, were considering doing. So I, I expect it to go up, yes, based on the use.
So the land will still be taxable, but not the, not the solar panels?
Well, no, in different ways. So the land will be taxable. I think I explained at the subcommittee meeting.
But the personal property will not be, right? Correct? But the personal property will not be taxable?
Yeah, as I said, the land will be taxable, and the, the solar property, the, the reference on the front page of this is to new legislation that passed, I think it was in March of this year, and it's, it, what it does, it treats differently how you have to tax these. It may, it probably will, we're still, you know, there's still clarification. It may go to page three of the recap, which is miscellaneous, non-recurring, as opposed to being in the tax, in the tax rate. We still need to clarify that a little bit with the new legislation that passed.
All right.
Again, it's technical, and I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's technical, and that's what our attorney said.
Okay. Twenty years is a long time. We, we have no idea what's gonna happen twenty years from now, but the only, the only problem that I have with this is the fact that it's a solar, solar farm up on a piece of land, and we've had problems up on Dresser Hill with the runoff. So just wanna make sure that before we agree to anything up there, that we have some commitment, that there'll be steps taken to prevent the runoff, as we've had on Dresser Hill. Thank you.
Anyone else? Gus? I'm sorry, Counselor Steves.
Just a quick comment to that. I agree with what Mike just said, and just wanna point out that this is something that, that I think we've kind of thrown around the idea of doing something, I think we really need to seriously consider, a moratorium on more solar development. I know Counselor Lozo mentioned it, the subcommittee. I know we tried, we threw it around at GenGov briefly, and then unfortunately, I got sick, and I couldn't attend that meeting. But it's something I think we need to seriously consider. This is a project that got approved a few years ago, so I'll certainly support the fact that the town will get paid for it. But if this were coming up as a separate project, it's not a project I would approve now.
Counsel Lozo.
Since it was mentioned, I know at subcommittee, I brought up that I would suggest a moratorium for a year or two to bring up a discussion on the future of solar panels in the town of Southbridge, because they haven't worked out quite the way we thought they would. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well. All those in favor?
Request a roll call, because it is a pilot.
Certainly. Roll call, Mary.
Counselor Katrona?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
No.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lozo?
No.
Counselor Marketti?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
And Counselor Adams?
Yes.
I have five-four.
Yep.
Very good. Motion passes. Item number twenty-four, vote to approve a transfer of one-hundred-sixty-three dollars and fifty cents from account number six-zero-zero-four-four-zero-dash-five-two-zero-one-zero-zero, Maintenance Operating, to account number six-zero-zero-four-four-zero-dash-five-four-three-one-zero-zero, Operations, for the increase in annual contract operation over budgeted amount for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. The budget was based on a four percent increase, actual increase was four-point-oh-two percent, based on the Consumer Price Index for Urban Consumers, CPIU, from September twenty-twenty to September twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Counselor Marketti.
Oh, the meeting was canceled, so it came straight up to the council.
Very good. Heather, please, Ms. Blakely.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Marketti, for considering moving these directly to council. As some of you know, I was sick last week, so I wasn't able to be at the meeting that was scheduled, so. I think this is pretty self-explanatory. The wastewater treatment plant contract has a clause in it that is adjusted annually in September, well, based on the September index, which doesn't actually come out until, like, November. We have received those adjustment calculations, and we budgeted at 4%, knowing that the CPIU was going up, but it actually was 4.02. So we're very close, so we just needed the extra $163.50 to cover that extra 0.02%. And it's just coming out of the existing budget. We're just taking money out of one line item and putting it into the other.
Very good. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So, question for Counselor Marketti. You always write on everything, but how come you moved that agenda, didn't go to Subcommittee either if she's sick, why you don't reschedule it?
She was sick.
Still have to go, this is the way you want it, correct? Everything before I come here, I have to go to Subcommittee.
Well, I was just trying to be, I was just trying to be, you know, accommodated. If she wasn't going to be there to answer her questions, we did have some other issues about roads that we needed to ask questions on, so I thought it was best that we, I hope you're feeling better, too, by the way. I was kind of concerned there.
I was quite sick, negative Covid, but quite, there's a nasty cold going around, so I will let everybody know that there is a bad.
No, I understand what.
I want to continue.
I understand what you're saying, Counselor.
Okay, Counselor Dow, you may continue.
Thank you, Mr. Marketti, that's nice of you, what you did. Thank you, thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion?
I do have one question.
Counselor Marketti.
I know, it's not very much money, but I just was kind of wondering, when you did this contract, I remember you saying that it was CPIU was 5%.
No, it's a range, so the contract has a range in it that there's a minimum of 2% and a maximum of 5%. So it's based on actual CPIU rates that are published by the federal government from Boston, so they come out a couple months after. So we have to make an assumption, you know, for the budgets that we're doing, and make a, start making assumptions in basically January about what the CPIU is going to be nine months from now, from then. So we have to make a guess, obviously, of what it's going to be at the time. I did know costs were going up, so we guessed 4%. The actual cost came in at 4.02, so we have to make that adjustment. I would expect that next year, I will probably be putting in the max, just because I know what's going on with the CPIU to be safe. But it's, you know, we have to, we have to know what we're up against right now, so we're going to have to look at what the rates are doing at that time and go from there. But we do have a min and a max, so even if it's below, I will say historically, we've been very much at that 2% range since I've been here, and this is the first time I've seen it really go up to that range.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 25, vote to approve the summary table for 2020, 2021, winter equipment hire for snow plowing and snow removal with the addition of Piapi Construction.
Who moves second?
Heather.
So this is the second time you're seeing this table. I did say at the first time that we probably would come back with additional vendors. We did receive one more additional bid. Piapi Construction has been a regular snow plower since I started 10 years ago, so I kind of expected to get his bid. So now we have included it. You can see he puts in multiple pieces of equipment. I do think at this point, we are actually relatively well set up for this new year. We have had a couple people apply for the temporary snowplow driver positions internally also. Water Department is set to provide services again with their, some of their staff. The school department, at least one employee has indicated that they will also assist, and as you can see, although we have asked to temporarily hold the Veolia contract, we are also negotiating with them to be able to provide services similar to the water department to provide additional snow plowers that way. So we'll probably be better set up this year than we were even last year. We're already one more truck on for vendors, for outside vendors, and we should have available staff, additional available staff than we did last year, so.
Any questions? Counselor Catrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment. And I certainly will vote for this this evening, but come budget season, maybe we can take lessons from a gentleman like this that has equipment when we buy new vehicles, 47-years, 41-year-old vehicles, and he's still running them today and running them hard, too. Maybe we can take lessons on how we maintain our equipment. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Mr. Town Manager, I believe you asked to postpone number 26?
Yes, that was the Veolia contract that Ms. Blakely referring to about getting them to do some of the plowing at the water department, so we just have to talk with them and adjust one or two things in the document that was there and should be here for the next council meeting.
Mr. Chairman, do you want it postponed indefinitely or to a specific date?
To the next meeting on the 20th. We should be set by then.
Next meeting?
I'll make a motion to postpone till next meeting.
In second, very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Marketti, Counselor Marketti.
When you bring this contract back, you might want to change it to the Town of Southbridge. It says the Town of Sturbridge, so it's the wrong contract, wrong town.
It was their draft contract, Sturbridge, so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Very good, Council's Forum, let's start over here. Counselor Dow.
I want to say thank you for Mr. Will, serving the Town of Southbridge, and he did a great job, at least when I'm here. And to Yvonne, I think, I don't know, she came up already, or she's coming up, and Kim as well, and good luck with their future life, and thank you. Good night.
Very good, Counselor Lozo.
Yeah, I too spoke earlier on Will Canoyer's retirement, wishing him the best. Yvonne Tortis, years of service, wish her the best in retirement. Also, Kim Ferrin, who has since left, and she's now in Florida. The workers worked hard, they did their job to the best of their ability, and they deserve a happy retirement, and as all people that work here is like this, deserve that time, which is their golden years, so to speak. But just a quick comment to the new people in the front office, and I noticed I met a couple, Nor, that's her first name, in the front office, I engaged with her, very pleasant person, I really, and Gail, I really think the Town Manager picked a couple of workers there, they're very personable to the public, and I think, looking forward to working with them. I got a heads-up reminder today, which I don't normally get, but I really, I'm really optimistic about the new workers. It'll take a while for our new workers to catch up with our veterans. Here's in the front office, Kim, Mrs. Ryan, and Tortis, we're a threesome that just had so much experience on how to handle things. You just don't have that when you get the job. You earn that over the years, and I, again, to the experienced ones, congratulations and wish them the best in their retirement. Thank you.
Very good, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I would also like to extend well retirement wishes to Mr. Canoyer and a special one to Ms. Tortis. When I first was moving into town and getting adjusted, she was the person that helped me get adjusted and figure out Southbridge. I can honestly say, if it wasn't for her, I don't think I'd be here right now. She was so helpful in helping me understanding and all the information. She has been a real blessing to this community, and I, and I know this community is forever thankful for her years of service to this community, so thank you.
Very good, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll echo what you just said there, Counselor Ryan, about Yvonne. When I came in as council, and especially when we were dealing with the previous manager, she was a fountain of information and all that stuff that helped the town function when we really needed somebody that was running the show. And I think that, I hope that she and Kim have a wonderful time in Florida, because she's going there, too, but they hope that they send some of the warmth up here, but not the mosquitoes. I also want to say thanks to Denise Clements, and Yvonne, and Pamela Duke for their work in the Charter Commission, or Committee, rather. And when we get to doing that, there's going to be a whole bunch of, already scanning through, there's a bunch of changes in there, they've done a lot of work on it. So anyway, thank you to all of them, and thanks to Will for his time and service. Have a good retirement. I don't have anything else, thanks.
Very good, Counselor Catrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, nothing this evening.
Very good, Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I see that, like, this is about six months till the end of my first term, and there's some things that I hope that we can look at this upcoming year. One of them is, we have a lot of road construction this year. It seems like we need better oversight of the road construction, so I hope that we can do something about getting somebody who can oversee all the road constructions in town and make sure that things are done in a timely manner and in good quality work. I also hope that we can take a look at the curbside collection, that'll be coming up. I know that you had mentioned it earlier, it kind of got past me there, so I wasn't sure what day you were planning that, but I think that it's something we need to really work on, most of the residents in town that I talked to, they want to keep curbside collection exactly how it is right now, so I would be pushing for that as well. Also, I understood that Holiday Vision was a success. I'm sorry I couldn't make it, but I'm glad to see the town, you know, have some activities like that that are, you know, something to do in town and something that's, that makes people, you know, have a good time and feel good about Southbridge. It looked, the pictures I saw on social media, they looked, it looked really, like they were really having a great time. And I also would like to wish Yvonne Tortis Godspeed in her retirement. I worked, since I got on the Town Council, it was Yvonne Tortis that I worked with, I mean, I came in every Friday looking for my packet. She was very patient with me, and so I appreciate it, so that's all I have, thank you.
Very good, Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, Counselor Marketti said he was finishing up his first term, so was he announcing that he was running for reelection, because it sounded like it? Which is, which is good, I mean, a lot of work on council. A couple things, I know everybody thanked Yvonne Tortis and Kim in that office, but I really, I want to say thank you as well, because serving as chairman of the council for three years, she was a valuable asset to me and helped me tremendously as chairman in getting agendas, and sometimes we had a little quirks about agendas, but we did our best I can, so thank you, and wish her and Nick, you know, great retirement down there in Florida, and have them enjoy themselves. And also thank her for her work on the Charter Commission, and it was mentioned earlier, the Charter Commission with Pam, Denise, Yvonne, and Andrew Murch for their hard work on the commission. As you know, I announced that for almost a year, maybe two years, that we needed to get that going. It was very hard getting individuals to volunteer to do that, so I thank them for stepping up and some of the changes that, just looking at briefly, I look forward to the discussion on that. Holiday Visions, to Counselor Marketti's point, I had the opportunity to attend it with my grandson. It was a great event. I think by all accounts, it was the most people that I think have been down there and since it started, so it was a great evening, it was nice to see the community out, especially after the two years that we've been going through, so thank you to all that participated in that and the leadership for that. One thing, and I just don't know, we had a speaker, and he has every right to speak at Citizens Forum, however, and we've done our due diligence not to engage with speakers, because they do have their opportunity to be heard, however, to the community, there's a lot more to the story. And he threw out a lot of allegations that are not necessarily, are unfounded. There were a lot of concerns on that, and I just, we've been passionate on both sides on that, and councils have been passionate, I'm not going to rehash it, but at some point, it has to be addressed that he has the opportunity to speak, but some of the things he's saying, and we don't engage at Citizens Forum, but at some point, I think it's, I don't know how to get that message across it. We held a four-and-a-half-hour hearing the first time, then it was a violation, and we all disagreed, but there was a lot of opportunities to be heard on that case, so to the citizens, I just want you to know, there's more to the story, that we, this council was very compassionate the first time around, there was a lot of disagreements through counselors about how we were going to go even the first time, and we gave that individual the opportunity, for whatever, I'll just leave it at that, but to the citizens, there's more to the story, so I don't think that this council wasn't compassionate, because we were, and that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Vice Chair Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So I want to thank the Charter Review Committee for all the hard work, look forward to having that discussion at the council, the whole, and a good debate and review, so we really appreciate your time and effort in doing this. Ms. Tortis, I wish you and your husband the best heading down, heading down south to a little warmer climate, and well-deserved, and I appreciate your service. I did thank Mr. Canoyer earlier for his service to our community, and I wish all of them that have left the best in their new future, new chapter in life. Curbside, just to reiterate what Counselor Marketti, it's going to be voted on on the 10th of January. I am working with the Town Manager to come up with the motions, and based on, I believe, what the committee had discussed and voted on as well, and then we'll go from there to the committee. If any counselors or any residents need further clarification on it, give me a call, and I'll definitely help it where I can. Holiday Visions, it was just a bit cold that day, but it was great to see the community out, it was a lot bigger than we've seen in the past. RMG, I, Renaissance Medical Group, I attended their third anniversary dinner last month, it was a great success. Senator Gomez from Chicopee area, Springfield, I'm sorry, Springfield area was there to speak. Officer Rosa received their Hero Award, and it was a great overall event, and I found out that Senator Gomez, his father and I worked together in Springfield after I retired from the Marine Corps, and he's done a lot of great things for Veterans Services out in the Springfield area. And I think, lastly, tomorrow marks the 80th anniversary of attack of Pearl Harbor, you know, so as history moves further away from us, sometimes we forget, but we still have that part of that greatest generation that's still out there, very few left over from the Pearl Harbor attack. I know when I taught at the University of Oklahoma, we'd have the, those survivors from the USS Oklahoma there, and I don't believe there's any, any remaining service members left. And just reiterate on the VFW Post 6055, Leonide J. Le Meur, post here in town, is named after Southbridge resident, Leonide J. Le Meur. He was on the fantail of the USS West Virginia during the attack, he was getting ready to head over to the mainland of Oahu to go to church, and when the first wave came through, and he was killed instantly. So that's all I've got. The next meeting is December 20th at 7:00 PM here in the dais. Thank you.
There being no further business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous of all present.